We just have the two items on the agenda, right?
Correct.
Okay.
I got it.
Shouldn't be.
Yeah, I loaded this late this afternoon.
Yes, all yours. You seem like you're so far away tonight.
I know. I literally. You can move your son.
All right. Good evening. We have two items on tonight's study session. The first beginning with the discussion and presentation from the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority regarding the Access Oklahoma Turnpike Plan. We have a delegation here, and you're welcome for the table because we're going to have a whole lot of questions for you. So I will turn it over to you to begin the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. The audio is different in this exact spot than it is anywhere else. If I could have just a few minutes to introduce the people that we that I brought with me tonight. Starting on my right, your left, Kirsten McCullough is an environmental specialist and has done numerous environmental studies both for the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority and for ODOT and other municipalities in Oklahoma. Sitting next to her is Todd Gore. He is our right-of-way and utility relocation, right-of-way acquisition and utility relocation specialist for the Turnpike Authority. Sitting next to Mr. Gore is Brian Taylor. He is the chief engineer for ODOT. He's my counterpart on one side of the house. I'm actually service deputy director and chief engineer for OTA. Brian's chief engineer again for for ODOT. Behind me is Rick Johnson. Rick is the director of project delivery for ODOT. ODOT and OTA share some resources in project delivery and maintenance and other and other aspects. So Rick is here to help with some of those, help explain if we need to, some of the processes for both ODOT and OTA's project delivery. Next to Rick is David Strebb. With Poehn Associates, we hired Poehn Associates to manage this program through the manage the bond program. We're a very small staff at the Turnpike Authority. We do not have a lot of employees. We utilize outside resources typically through consultants. Poehn Associates performed the project, the program delivery for the Driving Forward Program, and so we've hired them to do the same for the Access Oklahoma Program. Next to Mr. Strebb is TJ Dill. TJ is the director of construction for the Turnpike Authority and will be the person that you'll want to want to get to know when it comes to any active and ongoing construction. On this side of the room, please help raise your hand. This is David Mockimer. He's the assistant deputy director of the Turnpike Authority with responsibilities primarily over toll and the tolling aspect at the turnpike. That's what sets us apart really from any other road operating entity in Oklahoma. Next to David is Jimmy Sparks. Jimmy Sparks works for Olson and Associates. We have a general engineering consultant. Olson is our general engineering consultant that handles some of the day-to-day inspections and things like that that the Turnpike Authority has. Next to Jimmy is Darren Butler. Darren's the director of engineering for the Turnpike Authority. We've got about six or seven people who typically work in our engineering department. Altogether at the Turnpike, there are six engineers. Darren represents that group. Next to Darren's Julie Porter. Julie's a comptroller for the Turnpike. She administers and makes sure payments go out and payments come in, manages that money. She's also going to help me tonight answer any financial related questions. Our finance director was unable to be here tonight, prior obligations. Next to Julie is Marcus Williams. Marcus handles Pike Pass and administers the call center that we have. A lot of folks don't realize we've had about 130-person call center that manages the calls when you dial 1-800-PIC-PASS. They're all right here in Oklahoma, actually on the, for the most part, on the north side of Oklahoma City. Behind Marcus is Mark Kalka. Mark Kalka is our director of maintenance. Mark operates the turnpike, handles the snow and ice, the yearly and annual mowing and all the maintenance-related projects. We have somewhere around 215 to 220 maintenance employees spread out across the 11 turnpikes. That's the staff that I brought with me tonight. I wanted to be able to answer any question that came up to the best that we could and minimize the number that we need to go back and search for additional information for you or any other councilman.
Thank you.
Quickly, I want to go through a very quick history of the Turnpike Authority. Specifically, Mr. O'Leary did a great job about three weeks ago presenting to the Norman City Council and trying to explain what we are, who we are, and how we operate. Turnpike Authority was created in Oklahoma in 1947 to construct the Turner Turnpike. You have to picture what that looked like, and you can look up historical road maps on ODOT's website. But in 1946, 1947, there were very few, only a handful of miles, literally four or five miles in Yukon, handful of miles in Tulsa, that were four-lane, divided, and paved, and none of those were high-speed. So the connection between Oklahoma City and Tulsa, our two major metropolitan areas, was very important at that time. We opened the Turner Turnpike in 1953. In 1954, with that brand-new facility, it had restaurants along it. It was really a destination. In 1954, by a vote of the people, we were allowed to cross-pledge, which allows us to treat our turnpike network like one turnpike, like one toll road, which enabled us to build the H.E. Bailey, now that portion of I-44, and the Will Rogers Turnpike up on the northeast corner of the state. All of that happened a couple of years before Eisenhower signed the interstate bill, which allowed ODOT to go and build the interstate system that we know today, I-40 and I-35 specifically, and then those portions of the of I-44 that are not told. So highlighted a couple of things in in green here that I want to pay particular attention to. There are only 11 turnpikes in Oklahoma. The Kickapoo that we opened this last year being the 11th. There are 624 approximate road miles, so those are centerline miles. We carry anywhere between 3,500 vehicles a day. That's on the Indian Nation Turnpike in southeastern Oklahoma and some of those segments. The Kilpatrick Turnpike here on the north side of the metro in certain areas carries around 70,000 vehicles a day there in and around Quail Springs Mall. Similarly, on the Creek Turnpike over in Tulsa, there are segments there around Jinx that are carrying 70,000 vehicles a day, which is the reason we six-laned those segments a number of years ago. Legislatively, they authorize, the legislature authorizes the projects. A lot of those projects were authorized a long time ago. A lot of those legislatively authorized projects are in areas that that connected, like, for instance, connect Ponca City to Tulsa, Ponca City toward Miami, Miami down to the southeastern corner of the state. At the time when those were designated, there were, may have been a need for that traffic to commute from Ponca City to maybe toward Tulsa. Those are not projects that we're anticipating to be working on anytime soon at all at this point. We don't receive absolutely no state appropriations for, so we don't go to the legislature annually to seek additional funding. We are completely self-supported, using utilizing the toll network and the tolls that we collect out in the lanes, whether that's through Pike Pass, through cash, or through our newly enacted plate pay. We are audited yearly by a top five as required by our trust indenture to be audited yearly by a top-five national firm. That year, this year, this last year, we were audited by BKD. It is not a three-day audit or a four-day audit, which some people are used to. This was a three-and-a-half-month audit between the time they came in and then submitting a final report. Secretary Gatz, Director Gatz for the Turnpike Authority serves for a six-member governor-appointed board, and we are a double-A minus, we have currently a double-A minus bond rating. Across the nation, a lot of states are beginning to utilize tolling of some sort. There are 35 current states that have some form of tolling. Texas, our neighbors to the south, have numerous tolling authorities. They're regional. Oklahoma only has one. Kansas only has one. Texas, I mean, Colorado has a couple of different tolling authorities. Those are the nearest to us that we typically are doing some form of work with. OTA, again, receives no state appropriations. We're approximately 40% of the revenue that we collect comes from out-of-state motorists, so it is a benefit to the state of Oklahoma to charge those tolls that we're able to pay for basically all of the maintenance with the with the toll money collected from the out-of-state motorists. And approximately 38% of the revenue is collected from commercial carriers of some sort. I included this graph that includes the projected sources of revenue for the Turnpike Authority. You'll notice that the bulk of that, the big blue section, is toll revenue. We do have some carryover from a previous year. We maintain some amount of funds within our, in the bank in order to be able to pay for anything that might come up. There's some interest income off of that invested money. We also collect some amount of money from the concessions, which are the restaurants and gas stations that are located in a few places throughout our system. This is our projected uses for 2022. We came up with this, and this graph was provided to our to our board back in December. This includes the debt service payment for the previously constructed projects, our asset preservation plan, which is the money that we spend to maintain and operate our existing facilities. Those were the mill and inlays, the bridge rehabs on the older projects, not unlike City of Norman. We have some number of projects all the time that are requiring planning and eventually some form of construction. The call center, the customer service center is on there. We fund our own highway patrols, so we fund approximately targeted 130 highway patrol troopers at the Turnpike Authority that we that provide an added benefit to the state. They don't live on the turnpikes. They operate off the turnpike on their way to and from their own home, which provides added benefit with that added level of troopers in Oklahoma. We have obviously some administration costs. There is a cost to collect. That's the toll operations piece, and then there is a routine road maintenance portion of that. We have a five-year capital plan. This is a revolving annual plan that includes those bridge rehabs, mill and inlays, surface treatments of any kind, drainage work, safety projects, and any joint ODOT and OTA projects where the OTA or ODOT or even some county and city streets interchange. We utilize that capital plan money, capital plan to schedule and and work those projects. Our toll rates are 60% below the national average when you look at passenger vehicles, which is about 90% of our traffic. Our toll rate's about eight cents a mile in Oklahoma. NTTAs is going to be around 21 cents. Other places in Texas, it exceeds 40 cents. Colorado is pretty high. Kansas is similar to OTA in around the eight to 12 cents, depending on the segment of highway that you're driving on. And again, we're 64% below the national average as it relates to heavy trucks. Recently, in our recent bond program, I don't know if this is showing up very well for the people that are sitting behind me, but the red sections that are on there are new turnpikes. So that included the John Kilpatrick Extension in southwest Oklahoma City, part of that outer loop, the Eastern Oklahoma County Turnpike on the east side, a portion of the outer loop, and then a section of the Gilcrees on the west side of Tulsa, which is a part of the Tulsa Outer Loop. In addition to those new turnpikes that were built, we also did expansion projects, widening the Turner Turnpike on the east end. About 18 miles will be complete in a couple of months up on the east end. It'll be all, that portion will be finished. We'll be able to raise the speed limit. It's lit, it's safe, and people are only asking when we're going to finish the rest of it. We did a couple smaller projects, also a pavement rehab and on both the H.E. Bailey and the Muskogee Turnpikes as well. So one of the big things that's been just something that Turnpike Authority that we're working on continuously is this effort to go cashless. The number-one location to have an accident on a turnpike is in a toll zone. We've had somewhere in the neighborhood of 500 accidents in the last six years in toll areas. The effort there, the issue there is that people are slowing down and sometimes coming to a stop in interstate-type travel. That's dangerous to come to a stop, even if it is required for us to be able to collect that cash. So we're we're working diligently to convert additional turnpikes. The John Kilpatrick was done this last summer in 2021. This year, we're working on the H.E. Bailey, the Cimarron, which is US 412, a portion of it, Creek, which is State Highway 364, that we're all working to convert at least portions of this year, and some of that may bleed over into January of next year. So all, any new access projects, any new construction, any rehab that we do, we'll utilize and convert to plate pay. We're interoperable with all of Texas and Kansas, and there is the, we're testing right now with the Southeast Hub, which is down toward Florida and that direction, where eventually your Pike Pass will be able to work down there. We're hoping to have that complete sometime later this year. The, I want to lead into the Access Oklahoma program and what this program really is. It's a large program. Again, this last bond program was widening a section of the of the Turner building, replacing some pavement and building a few miles in both Oklahoma City and Tulsa of new alignment. This plan is much longer term in order to provide a further down-the-road look, if you will, into what the Turnpike Authority is going to be working on, what we're going to work on going forward in partnership with ODOT. We're going to widen the rest of the Turner Turnpike between Oklahoma City and Tulsa, so that's that portion of I-44. We'd like to widen 14 miles of the Will Rogers up toward Claremore. Claremore down on I-44. That portion coming back toward Tulsa's got a lot of congestion and some, and a higher level of accidents in there due to that congestion. We're looking at widening the John Kilpatrick Turnpike from I-40 on the south and west side, or the west, southwest side of Oklahoma City, around to the northeast side at I-35 due to the extreme growth in traffic volumes that we're seeing annually. We're going to review the extents of the rest of the turnpike network. Because we were tied to collecting that cash, originally, there are locations that we bypassed and didn't provide interchange access, both with state highways and with very rural communities. So we're reviewing lots of locations to see where that needs to be, where we need to go back and add interchanges. And all of those are being afforded to us by the new cashless model that we're going to. And then the last segment here that I know we're going to spend some time on today is to provide an alternate route for the I-35, I-44 congestion that's happening on the south side of Oklahoma City. The contributing factors of that, again, are area, population, the traffic growth, the accident data, and the safety issues that exist, as well as the travel time reliability. And this really doesn't show up very well on this screen in front of me, but I think on the monitor in front of you, you'll be able to see the blue graphs across the top. Those are, those are census data looking backward from 2020 and projecting forward the exponential growth that is happening in Oklahoma City, Moore, Norman, particularly in Goldsby, much smaller town, and Purcell. And what I tried to correlate here, or what we're trying to correlate here, is that along those south graphs, or along the golden graphs across the bottom of the screen, is the exact same data being shown in in traffic data. That's traffic data that ODOT has gathered off of I-35 in this case, and the exponential growth that basically follows the population trends in the, in similar areas. And what that, those graphs basically show is that over the course of the next 30 years, the traffic on I-35 is going to try to double. It's impossible for the traffic on I-35 to double in its current configuration without being bumper-to-bumper all day, every day during the, probably from 5:00 to 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock at night. More so than it is now, on my way down here today from Oklahoma City, I was stuck in traffic a few different times, came almost to a stop, and then it broke loose once I got down to Norman. And I think over the course of the next 10 to 15 years, you'll see that progressively get worse the further south that you go, to the point that it will bleed over onto area north-south roads, including state highway system and the arterial connections that the cities and counties provide. So just that data and real numbers for the average annual date, average annual daily traffic, the ADT for I-35 in particular, starting at the top, we're looking at State Highway 9 and at the growth rate between 2002 and 2019, and you'll see in a second why we did not count 2020. Traffic volumes were way low in 2020. They bounced back in 2021, but we didn't have finalized and cleaned-up data for 2021 to provide for today. Still working on that. But basically, the the graph holds true that it's growing at 1.4%, which is what we typically use when projecting traffic data forward for for I-35 and for any other interstate in Oklahoma. We anticipate a 1.4% growth. You'll notice that as you get closer to I-240, that that growth gets to be significantly more, 3%, 2.8%, in some areas, 3.9%. That's, of course, all the way up south of I-40. And that we projected this all the way up to the south side of the Turner Turnpike, catching some of that traffic that's just trying to get to and from the Turner Turnpike or to and from the north side of Oklahoma City. Some averages are shown across the bottom, basically showing that I-35 carries a lot of traffic. Put some of that data on into accident, this is accident data that I had pulled that ODOT did for me. The left side, two bar charts are I-44. The right side, I think, is where we would like to focus this evening, which is on the growth in accidents that have happened on I-35 just since 2010. And what that number shows there in 2019 is that there are 1,827 accidents in the year of 2019 on I-35, and that is from Purcell to Interstate 40. The other thing that's important to note is that as accidents have gone up, even though driver-assist vehicles are getting smarter at braking, the severity of those accidents is going down. And what that tells us is that those accidents are happening in congestion, they're low speed, there are people who are trying to come to a stop, and it becomes some form of usually a fender bender. The one thing that I want to touch on real quick, that 1,827 number, which I think is going to be similar for 2021 when we get the totals, each one of those accidents, almost every one of them involve two vehicles, so that's almost 4,000 people that were involved in accidents between Purcell and Interstate 40 in 2019. So what does that mean when you correlate that heavy amount of congestion in the peak period that currently exists certain times of the day on I-35? If you look in the very top-left corner of the screen, it says that it takes 87 minutes to get from Purcell to the north end of the Kickapoo Turnpike if you stay on I-35 all the way to the Turner. If we don't do anything, if we don't provide some form of reliever for that, by 2050, just 30 years into the future, that that drive turns from an hour and a half into a two-hour and 10-minute drive. And that two-hour and 10-minute drive will last for more of the day than it currently does. We correlated that into number of vehicles that were stuck in that traffic and not able to free flow and calculated a days lost per day, if you will, which is a quality-of-life issue. It's whether you can be at home with your family or at work being productive. And that goes from 806 days lost every day, which is what I-35 basically has today, to a very large number, 3,763 by 2050. So what we correlated that to is the the new alignment, if built and and complete by 2035, is just a 35-minute drive. That's estimating the free flow, the 37 or 38 miles at 80 miles per hour. We did add some additional minutes to that trip. Those are our numbers to show that we do anticipate that eventually you'll get stuck behind a couple of vehicles that are either trying to pass or not going the speed limit, and eventually there'll be some form of loss in free flow even on a new alignment. The Turnpike Authority cannot have people, because we're charging a premium to drive on the road, we can't have people stuck in traffic. So as soon as we start to see major congestion or it's on the cusp, we start trying to widen those facilities. So with that, I would like to, if I still may, walk quickly through the Access Oklahoma website. This has really been the number-one place to get factual data that we have been really being proactive about posting. We're getting lots of questions, so we're trying to answer those questions. Across the top, there's a frequently-asked question file where we've posted not only an explanation of how we sell bonds, but also who our bondholders are. I know that's been a question that's come up several places, and so there's a frequently-asked question that has some of that information. We're also addressing and updating this website with additional information related to the ongoing questions that we continue to get, both through the email group or through the phone calls. We're being as proactive as we can, trying to return those at this point now within 24 hours of receiving the, receiving a call or an email. Sometimes the information that's requested has been difficult to get, so it's sometimes there's a little bit of lead time on on trying to come up with some of that information. Obviously, where a lot of people are very interested is in this map. Briefly, I want to talk that, I want to explain that the yellow dots, if you will, that are all over this map are additional interchange access locations that either the local community has asked for in the past, over the past almost forever, or since the turnpike has been built, or it's a location that we are trying to manage traffic and we have an issue with being able to get emergency vehicles or even people who are stuck in traffic turned around. So most recently, I believe it was this last fall or last summer, on the H.E. Bailey Turnpike, a Newcastle fire truck tried to make a U-turn through one of those emergency cut-throughs, which we don't recommend. They tried to make one, got the truck hung in the in the crossover, and then were T-boned, and it was a brand-new fire truck. We need to add additional safe access points throughout our network to cover, I don't know why it all just disappeared. That was weird. It kind of scared me for a second. We need to add additional safe ingress and egress points throughout our network to minimize the number of places that an emergency vehicle feels the need to use one of those emergency cut-throughs. They're dangerous. The other part, the other side of that is we need to provide better access to the communities that we can better serve with cashless tolling. We have not been able to do that in the past. It's not something that I came up with or our current staff came up with. Now we want to do these, and we're just going to be helpful at this point. It's because of that cashless tolling aspect and because of that initiative. The other thing that I want to touch on briefly before we zoom in on the south side of the city is that the all-encompassing I-40, I mean, I-44 Turner Turnpike widening is captured here, the John Kilpatrick widening is captured here, the flyover direct connects at Hefner Road, Hefner Parkway, State Highway 74, and the John Kilpatrick are captured on here, and as well as some of the projects that are in our list of immediate needs, which include some bridge rehabs, even the Hakey Creek Bridge up on the Broken Arrow South Loop. If you've been in that section, or if you've recently, in the past, drove the John Kilpatrick on the west side, there were some bumpy bridges there that needed, were due for a rehabilitation. We rehabilitated those and made them significantly smoother. The section up on the Creek Turnpike is similar to that and will undergo a similar upgrade So what I want to explain, at least if I can, oh, I see, if I can get scroll in and zoom in down here, what we're calling the outer loop and is listed as several different projects in here, is this section on the south- is this section on the southwest side of the Will Rogers Airport. This ties into the southwest corner of the John Kilpatrick Turnpike, soon to carry the I-240 designation, so it'll carry an interstate designation. Some of the old studies talked about carrying that connection down toward a location somewhere between Moore and Norman before it proceeded east and then back up north toward the, where the Kickapoo Turnpike is now. The connection here, we took the piece out that was between I-44 mainly because of the tremendous amount of development that's happening over here between Newcastle, Tuttle, and Blanchard. So we thought better to serve those folks would be to provide an additional river crossing that crosses from, off the end of State Highway 37 East toward Moore and Norman along the Indian Hills Road section. Do we know why the map keeps disappearing? So what I was hoping to be able to zoom in on this and show, and maybe it's going to show back up as I zoom in, there we go. This is a full directional interchange over here at, at Newcastle, proceeding east, it's a new river crossing across the South Canadian. When we get over here to Western, on the west side of I-35, this section, what we anticipated would be asked for or would be requested is that Indian Hills Road would be maintained as a one-way frontage road, so a frontage road on both sides being one-way. Interchanges here would be at Western, and then again, another one down a little bit closer to Santa Fe, tying in and before the I-35 corridor, the I-35 connection, which is also a full directional interchange, so you'll be able to go all the different directions at the time when we complete this. Indian Hills Road here is on, has a westbound two-lane and has an eastbound two-lane. These are grades separate, it's a grade separated over the BNSF Railway just east of I-35. We assumed that once we went east of I-35, the best location to take this would be further to the south. At the time, we looked at this, and we've looked at a few different alternatives here, trying to take it a quarter-mile south, trying to take it a half-mile south, all of those because of Little River that runs parallel, basically, to Indian Hills Road, about a half-mile to a mile south of Indian Hills, posed a major issue for working within, basically, a wetland the entire length, so ultimately, the best location was to move that back up to and along the Indian Hills Road corridor. Indian Hills Road in this section and in the section west of I-35 would be rebuilt to brand-new standard within its existing footprint. We don't intend to cross over Indian Hills Road at any location to, for instance, into the Belmar Golf Course or into any of these neighborhoods. I'm going to go back because I missed one. This neighborhood that's on the south side of Indian Hills, I know there's a, a, a study area, orange coloring that goes into that neighborhood. We have no intention of purchasing right-ofway along that south side. We want to hold Indian Hills Road on its current alignment, at least that's what we anticipated at this time. Proceeding east, we maintain those one-way frontage roads on each side with additional interchanges at 12th, which is Sooner, one that's over here at Broadway or near Broadway, and then one that's on the VAR East End, which is at Douglas Boulevard or 48th Street. One option, and we haven't, we anticipate visiting at some point with City of Norman about, is the one-way frontage roads, whether that's something that's desirable or not, and also whether the city would like the opportunity to extend those one-way frontage roads as far as we can further to the east, and maybe it's not. At this location, I'll stop for a second and explain what you see on the map. The, the blue line is the center line of the main line four lanes, so it's basically the ditch, if you will, between the two main lines. If you picture, if you've driven the Kickapoo at any given, in recent times, the typical section through this location would look just like that. That orange or yellow corridor study area that we're showing there is about 1,200 feet wide, it's 600 feet each side of the blue line. If you look at the Kickapoo Turnpike, there is nowhere we're wider than about 600 feet, and that's in a major cut section with some big back slopes. We really think that most of the Kickapoo, it fits within about 200 to 600 feet. So this big swath that we're showing on here, that I know lots of people have, have calculated and gone out and looked at the number of homes, the number of vertical structures, the number of barns and, and shops and things that are within that area, and, and said that those are the ones that are going to be impacted because we're going this wide. We are, have absolutely no intent of a 1,200-foot-wide swath anyplace. So this, this will get narrowed down significantly, that's the reason that we started doing some survey work. I know I saw, we were doing aerial survey, we're trying to get enough information in order to be able to tie this down to something that we really believe to be what the alignment maybe could be.
Even if they're not in the orange...
Even if they're not in the orange, you're still going to have a turnpike in their front yard, correct?
That will depend on the location.
Backyard?
It would depend on, I'm sorry.
Backyard, maybe?
Well, it would depend on a lot of different things, you know, depending on the impact to that piece of property. Through our negotiation process, that's another thing we've been pressed on, can you give us an estimate of the number of homes? And we have said, we can't possibly give an estimate when we don't know what the alignment is exactly. We think we're going to be in this study area with someplace.
All right, we're going to, this is for council to talk, thank you.
Thank you. We're going to, we can't possibly know what that number is. The other, the other thing that would be bad for us to estimate is that sometimes through the negotiation process, a property that may be impacted to the vacant portion of the property can somehow, through the negotiations, end up being a total take, if that's what the property owner wants. That, that happens from time to time. And on the Kickapoo, we didn't know the exact number of, of homes that were impacted until all the right-ofway had been acquired. So it's, it's really difficult to come up with an, an estimate. To your point, Mayor, the, there are going to be people who will have, that currently don't have a turnpike as a neighbor, and will, we will become a new neighbor. And we understand that, we try, and all of us, I think, everybody that's in here, was involved in the, in the last expansion program. Mr. Gore, that's sitting over here beside me, can explain all of the right-ofway nuances, every single parcel is unique, every single family member is unique. It's the most serious thing that we do, both in, both at ODOT, Mr. Taylor, and at the Turnpike Authority. It's the most serious thing we do. We go out and purchase property from people who did not have a for-sale sign. Okay? And we totally understand that. And we're, and we try to be as conscious about it as we possibly can in establishing that fair market value. I'll let Mr. Gore speak to that in just a few minutes. But to your point, yes, there will be people who today don't have a, a turnpike as a neighbor, and will have a turnpike either as a neighbor, whether it's on their property they used to own, or a neighboring property, or maybe two houses down. I mean, that's, all those things are possibilities when looking at these alignments.
Well, I want us to continue so we can get to the questions, but with all due respect, it's more than just property owners, though, especially the east, you know, loop will completely change the character of our city, not just one property owner or 100 property owners. I think that's something that you can't ever give back to Norman.
Yes, I, I understand.
Okay, please continue.
Thank you. Proceeding further east, and, and before I leave this, and I know I'm going to forget it, so I'm going to plant a seed so that somebody can remind me. I, I want to go back through a priority list of these projects before, before I get to the questions. This is a rather-large interchange, we placed this out here, or we anticipated placing it in a very wooded area that's owned by, I think, a paper mill or a paper plywood company. I thought that'd be a good location for a, what will end up being a pretty wide piece of, of real estate. We anticipated an interchange at Choctaw Road, because ODOT on I-40 has an interchange at Choctaw Road. We anticipated an interchange at Peabody Road, and this takes us back up to the south end of the Kickapoo where several ramps that don't currently exist today would need to be built to provide full access. Going back to what we are calling the south extension, that starts right here off of this, the loop piece and proceeds south, these are realignments of the existing city street, because we're crossing at an intersection, we wouldn't put the, an interchange under a bridge in that location, or if the county road is over, those are just guesses at this point, until we've got that survey data. Proceeding south and west, the next interchange is down at Alameda, that we anticipated being the main access, one of the main accesses, to and from the lake and also to and from downtown Norman. An interchange at an obvious location, State Highway Nine, an additional one that's down here at Etowah Road on the east side of Noble, and then an additional interchange that's at State Highway 77, but just north of Slaughterville and sl, south of Noble, and then south and west across the South Canadian River, across the BNSF Railway, again, in another location, to a full directional interchange. We've probably got some work to do on exactly what this looks like, but it's a loop ramp that facilitates southbound to eastbound, and then a flyover bridge that connects southbound to southbound and northbound to northeastbound at this location. I didn't forget, so I'll really quickly tell you what our priority list in, in looking at this very-long-range plan is. I-44 overrun in the tri-city area is carrying somewhere, getting close to 50,000 vehicles a day. This information is available on ODOT's website. I-35 there, south of Moore, is nearing, if not exceeding, 100,000 vehicles a day. You have to remember that the, the average daily traffic is averaging in Sundays, which are typically in Oklahoma, the least-traveled days, but that also averages in football traffic for both OU and, and other university home games. So as a priority, for our priority list, the first priority would be to get this section connected between I-44 over to I-35. That doesn't mean that the full interchange at I-35 would be complete at the time we would open it, but it would be, you'd be able to get on and off the turnpike, on and off of Indian Hills Road on that west side. The next priority would be to get this segment done on the east side that connects back to the south end of the Kickapoo. That's a major project, a very-long project with lots of service road as it's currently drawn today. And, and then third priority would be this section on the southwest side of the Will Rogers Airport. Fourth priority, again, in a 15-year-long-range plan, is this section from the Indian Hills Road corridor down south to Highway Nine, and then as a fifth priority to get from Highway Nine down to I-35. Understanding that there are many environmental impacts on this section on the west side of Lake Thunderbird, and understanding that it might provide us the additional time we need to conduct those additional studies that may be warranted in that area prior to us beginning or doing any construction in that area or establish, final establishment of, of an alignment. So what I, you know, when you look at the way the Turnpike Authority announced the driving-forward program for the Kickapoo, at the very first announcement, a board was shown, we didn't do it digitally at that time, but a board was shown, and a two-mile-wide colored section was shown from I-44 down to I-40. And thousands and thousands of people fell underneath that corridor when, in fact, the engineers that were working on the project had a pretty good idea of where it was not going to go. We knew we weren't going to go through a cemetery, we knew we weren't going to go through neighborhood after neighborhood in a row, and we knew that the corridor was going to be significantly more narrow than that. A few months ago, when this was discussed with our authority board in, on, in December for the very first time publicly, we talked about, how are we going to show this, and can we narrow this up so that it is less impactful and hopefully causes less anxiety on the people that are in the community than we did the last time, trying to learn from our mistakes? So fast forward to February 22nd, the alignments that you see on here now have marinated, I guess, for a month. We are one month into a 15-year-long-range plan. I, I continue to hear people say, I wish you'd have come to us 10 or 15 years ago, and that's really what we're trying to do, is to come and, and, and work through this project hand-in-hand, in an area that we understand to be sensitive, we understand that it wasn't the plan, and we understand that we weren't asked to come for this, both south extension and the, and the east-west portion. The goal that I, that I have is that at some point, we're able to work with the city manager's office, with the public works director and the city engineers for Norman, to communicate back and forth with the city council and address concerns in real time as this project is developed, however it moves forward, and however fast we're able to move forward. This, what we've done in the past is a small segment, you know, this is four of those, four or five of the last programs, and if we'd done it like we did last time, we'd have showed a huge corridor and we'd have only done a little piece of this. And then five or six years from now, we'd come back and, hey, here we come again with another segment, and it'd have been probably in this priority list that I'm trying to show. And eventually, we'd have shown up with this segment that's north-south, and it could have been some years from now. What we are trying to do is provide a long-range look at what Oklahoma needs to solve a major issue that's occurring on I-35 and that we know is going to grow on the west side of Norman, along I-35. We want to relieve some of that congestion. The traffic is going to double, that's going to happen. We don't think that half that traffic is going to pull off and take the turnpike, but some of it can. And if we can take and relieve some of that congestion that occurs on the interstate, it will better facilitate the Norman residents that do make that commute every day back and forth to Oklahoma City and are stuck in that congestion. We really think that this is the best solution to that travel-time problem for, for Norman. And I think with that, I think I've covered all the bullet points that I had in my head, and I'd be, would stand to answer any questions that you or the city council may have, Mayor.
Thank you. Council in Berlin.
Excuse me. Is there any prohibition on board members, their family members, or an LLC that they might be involved in in purchasing land in these areas as projected out?
So the question is, if there's somebody who is on the board?
The board, their family members, employees, their family members?
Or...
Or if they own an LLC, prohibited from buying land where these projections are going?
Okay. Mr. Gore, would you mind answering that?
Ma'am?
There's nothing that would prevent anybody from going out and buying land that's in this area. They bought it before OTA got there, they could fix or to do that, and then when OTA was ready to pursue the project, we'd approach that landowner at that time, but that would have to be to acquire that property.
What if they're buying land around it that would be used later for commercial development?
That would be between the current landowners and the future landowners.
Do you see any problem with that, that maybe some inside baseball, some almost insider trading, that some people in the good-old-boy system might be hooked up and out purchasing land? Do you have any idea if that's happened yet or not?
I, I'm unaware of that happening anyplace.
Yeah, none that I know of.
None that you know of, so if we go look at land records and if any of those people are on the board or their family members or an LLC, because it's easy to go through and do that kind of stuff, it seems, that would seem almost criminal to me.
I'm unaware of anybody that is on our board, their family members or an LLC, purchasing any property, and I'd be interested, if you have evidence of that, to bring that before us, that's something we would definitely want to look into.
And what would happen if you looked into it and found it?
You know, I don't, I don't know the answer to that. That'd be the first time that that had come up. We have, we have had to purchase property from, both at, this has happened at ODOT and at OTA with approximately 2,700 employees between the two entities, that we've had to purchase property from a... that we've had to purchase property from a, an employee or somebody that was a member of the board or the Transportation Commission. When that happens, we typically have taken it through condemnation, correct? And so the court decides the value of the property. So there's no, so there's no favoritism shown by, and, you know, somebody who's working directly for us.
Well, just to me, I mean, we already have roads that were taxed on to the hill that are still just some of the worst roads in America. Then we're going to have to pay to use these roads. Somebody's making money on it. The whole process just seems gross when you're, especially you're going to change our whole landscape of our city. I don't, I don't know. I'm sorry, I don't mean to be rude, but I'm just not a big fan of any of this process.
I do understand, sir, and I hope that through this process, we're able to show you how it works and provide you with information that you are looking for going forward. Again, trying to open up the lines of communication from our staff with Norman's staff so that we can facilitate providing answers to the questions that you may have. And I am happy to sit down and visit with you outside of a city council meeting, if you'd like, about any concerns that you have, whether it be the active project, a property owner or, or otherwise.
Thank you.
Speaking of staff, were mayors and city managers of other impacted communities contacted or notified before, a week before February twenty-second?
So the answer to that is yes. There were certain staff at certain, both, both local government, whether that be county commissioner in nature or city staff, were apprised in a very high level, at a very high level, of what we, nothing like what you're seeing necessarily on the screen right now. But at a very high level, we talked about a program. And specifically, a couple of years ago, I think we started that program in twenty-twenty. We started a study to look at additional interchanges on the Indian Nation Turnpike. Last summer, I was called to the Capitol for an interim study for additional access points on the, on the Indian Nation Turnpike. Through each of those, the answer that I gave last summer to, to everybody that we talked about is in order for us to facilitate a major investment like this in a, even in a small community, we can't afford it within our capital plan. I don't think I did a good job of making that point earlier. Our normal capital plan is just for our routine maintenance. So when we want to build something new, it takes additional funds. And, and the only way that that would be possible is through a future bond program. When we got to December seventh, the people who reached out, some reached out and asked us if their project, quote-unquote, was going to be a part of the, if their project was going to be a part of the, of the, of a, of a bond program as it was described to our board back in December. And so the answer is yes. We met with some between December seventh and February, immediately after February twenty-second. It was almost daily, sometimes two or three times a day, meeting with some other local governments and city leaders, city managers, city engineers.
So why weren't you more proactive in reaching out to the community that defeated an outer loop in nineteen ninety-nine?
I can appreciate that question in that, you know, I, it could be a mistake that we made. I don't know that we, that we knew exactly, you know, the impact or the, how Norman was going to react at the time. You know, putting in ten additional miles of one-way frontage roads along Indian Hills Road. We thought, I didn't see a bad side to that at the time when it was drawn. I didn't see a downside. I saw lots of positives for that alignment. The south connection is a major connection that, that's going to be a major freight movement, pulling some freight off of, off of I thirty-five for, for the freight that's trying to go north and east. Or trying to go east, it'll, it'll provide a bypass for some of them, a place for them to get off of I thirty-five. Every single truck we can remove is like taking ten cars off because of their, how slow they are to get back to speed and things. So probably could have done a better job. I know that we've, I'm eager to have meetings with you, Mayor, now, if you would like, whenever we, whenever we can get our calendars to line up.
I'm sure we'll be chatting a lot.
Okay, good.
But I mentioned that because you wanted to improve the process. And we were all caught wildly off guard and didn't have answers for residents that were coming to us traumatized. And I appreciate, you know, this is where it's twelve hundred feet instead of, it's actually going to be six hundred feet. For us, that just means you traumatized twice as many people. And so for future communities that have to be terrified of losing, you know, retirement homes, dream homes, family homes, I would recommend getting that public input before, at least apprising us so we can do a better job of communicating with our residents, especially Councilman Portorello. I mean, I can't even imagine the phone calls you started receiving. So yeah, I, I think that's very, very important going forward and Oklahomans deserve that. Thank you. Councilmember Schuler?
I'm going to be real honest, I've got a lot of questions. And then after your presentation, I have a bunch more. So I'll ask several and then I'll let my fellow councilmembers get to some and then I'll get back in the queue. But kind of following up with kind of Mayor Clark's line of questioning about why we weren't, I guess, informed earlier in the process so that we could have understood that this was coming. Can you lay out a timeline of events to, for us of where this started? I mean, because we talked about when this was first publicly talked about, which was in December. But can you back up from there and tell us, like, when did this become an idea? When was this first kind of circling and starting to be talked about?
Sure, I, I can do my best. I don't have a timeline in front of me, so a little, little disclaimer. But all of us that both represent OTA and ODOT, we are always looking at the issues that exist and a solution that we can provide sometime in the future. The Turnpike Authority is a tool in that tool belt for transportation in Oklahoma in that when we can, when we can do something, we can usually move quickly because we have a different set of funding. ODOT has to develop plans well in advance. That's a requirement to utilize some of the federal funds that they utilize. Ours, once we make it public, to Councilmember Lynn's question earlier, you know, once we make it public, people run out and can try to buy a property ahead of a turnpike. This happens in other states as well. So it didn't become public, at least as an idea, in front of our board until December seventh, twenty-twenty-one. It wasn't shown on this map until February twenty-second of this year, twenty-twenty-two. Not long after Secretary Gatz was, became secretary of the, in the cabinet, months later, six to eight months, I'm going to guess. He came to me and said, the, the governor's interested in a bold vision for Oklahoma and transportation. We, he came to me with that, you know, more than a year ago, probably. I, prior to working at the Turnpike Authority, I've, I've been here five years at, at OTA. Prior to that, about fifteen years at, at ODOT. I, I was in EIT, engineering training with ODOT and spent most of my time working in Perry, which is District Four now, was called Division Four then. District Four, which includes Oklahoma and Canadian counties and basically two counties wide all the way to Kansas. While I was in District Four and working for ODOT, all the time, we were looking at, what do we need to do to resolve issues, whatever that issue was? Short story, I'll, I'll try to keep it short, but while I was between houses.
I mean, we've got, we've got a lot of questions.
Okay, I'll go try to go fast, is that what you're telling?
Yeah, I mean.
I'll do, I'll go quicker.
I just don't want you to be here forever.
Okay. We will stay here until all the questions have been answered, best that I can, or until you ask me to leave.
Okay.
While I was staying, I ended up staying in Moore for a time and, and working, while I worked, my offices in Perry. During that time, identified the, while I was making that drive for just two weeks, identified the issues that were occurring at the I thirty-five, I forty and I two thirty-five interchange where there is a one-lane ramp that went northbound to eastbound I forty and the same thing in the reverse direction, westbound I forty to southbound I thirty-five. And over the course of that week, I thought we could fit another lane and get another lane on these ramps. It would resolve that bottleneck in that location. And just, just due to changing my driving habits for a couple of weeks, that project was added to the eight-year construction work plan. Fast-tracked because it didn't need right-of-way relocation or utilities, uh, right-of-way acquisition or utility relocation. And so all the time, we were looking at an issue that exists in transportation in Oklahoma and a solution. The, I'm going to say that this east-west connection and the connection down to Purcell has been something that's been, at least on my mind, for a number of years, six or seven years before I ever went to the Turnpike Authority. I knew there needed to be a reliever route for I thirty-five. Traffic projections that continue to grow on I thirty-five exceed what they were twenty years ago, what we thought they were going to be. That is not a result necessarily of just Norman or just one of these other towns. It's a result of the entire group and the freight that's coming out of Texas. I, TexDOT is landing eight lanes, four lanes each direction into Oklahoma on I thirty-five. They're working on it right now. And so they know that there is major traffic headed this direction. We're trying to do what we can in the Oklahoma City area to prepare for that. I, I, we drew some, some lines late last summer, what I would call a sophisticated Crayola drawing. They did not have a horizontal curve, no civil engineering had been applied to come up with an idea. Most of that work has been done between December seventh and February twenty-second. And what you see on the map in front of you is a sophisticated map, sophisticated Crayola drawing, if you will, because none of those studies have been done that we need to do, that we need to do in order to finalize the actual alignments.
Okay, so I think my point with asking the question is that this has been thought about in the minds of the OTA, other entities for quite a long time. But there were certain key individuals that were not brought along for that conversation, i.e. the cities and towns that were, that are going to be impacted with these road construction projects. And Mayor talked about this last week, but, you know, why, why was ACOG, why did, why did that get taken out of their long-range plan? You know, it was there, it disappeared for the last several plans. We, as a city, in ninety-nine, said, no, we, we defeated it then. There was, has been lots of talk about where is this route going to be? And so, you know, without these impact studies, environmental, engineering, surveying, all that kind of stuff, how did we get to this? How do we get to these lines on this map?
So, so basically, I don't want to re-ask your question, but I'm going to.
Sure.
If it's okay with you.
Mm-hmm.
You're asking how did these alignments get selected?
Correct.
So the, the alignments that are shown on this map, the, the east-west connection that ties into Highway thirty-seven and along Indian Hills Road, that's really the only place left that we can get through that doesn't impact major businesses on that section. Connecting back to the Kickapoo is a, makes sense. We tried to go out to that large vacant property that's a plywood property or something that's got trees on it. We tried to get out to there before we knew we'd need some form of interchange. Highway routes that are being designed for seventy or seventy-five miles per hour have, are very straight. And the footprint varies based on the terrain. So they need to be straight and flat, they want to be straight and flat. I'm sorry, the, the civil engineering will solve for that. The alignment that went back to the Kickapoo, we, we chose an alignment that would meet those design speeds horizontally for the curves and impacted the absolute least number of homes that we could see utilizing Google Earth. And this is an ArcGIS, but utilizing satellite imagery. The alignment that heads south is again, straight and it's a, it's a result of that speed and the engineering that's going to have to go into that. It's not a boulevard that can be designed to have lots of curves. So unfortunately, we're trying very hard. And I think when we get the, the engineering, the, the survey information and we get all that aligned, I think that the impact to homes is going to be tremendously reduced as far as homes that are in the way of the construction along this alignment. If we go east of the lake, and I know this is going to be a question that somebody is going to ask, if we go east of the lake, it adds twelve and a half miles to the length. It's a tremendous cost, obviously, first, first of all. Second of all, it becomes a less desirable route. It no longer serves the metro area of Norman. Granted, may not want it to, the council may not want it to serve the metro area of Norman. But it also impacts twelve and a half more miles of property. Now, I don't know the number of homes that are underneath the, that will, that will end up being actually impacted in the current alignment. But I know that if we make it twelve and a half miles longer to connect the two, the same exact two points, that it adds to the probability that will impact at least additional property owners, whether that's farms or, or additional homes. So that's, that's how we ended up with the alignment that's shown. There could be something through our study process. I mean, I, I have to, I have to say this. We, we established a line that we think we can stay within, whether it's missing, missing something that's relatively small. But if there's something that's completely in the way, we could have to realign to another location, whether that's west or east, a few hundred feet, a quarter mile. I mean, it's possible, I just want to say that it is possible. We will know so much more five or six months from now that we just don't know today. And as soon as I have that information, I'm more than happy to come back and try to explain exactly the reason that we chose the alignment that we either end up with or wherever we end up taking this.
So just to summarize, right now, this alignment is based on time, right? And it being the straightest route and?
It's based on.
The time from point A to point B, trying to get the straightest route, right? And the least number of miles, so to impact traffic times, essentially.
Travel time is what you're referring to.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that's, that's, that's a relative, that's a pretty good way of putting it, aside from that there are a lot more factors that factor into that time.
I mean, I, sure, I understand that. I'm just saying that if we kind of boil it down to, without having any more of the, the studies about environment, you know, the actual topography, what, what you can't see just from, you know, Google Earth or a plane or whatever, that's what we get with this alignment currently. So we're not talking about how many parcels are impacted, we're not talking about how many people, we're not talking about how many buildings, how many, like, homes, how many outbuildings, how many businesses. None of those things are taken into consideration.
I'm sorry that I did not understand the question prior. I do understand it, I think now. The, this line could have been drawn east or west of its current alignment. The reason that, that north-south segment, and I want to make sure that everybody understands, this piece that I'm pointing on the screen at, the reason that is there is that if you go east just a little ways, you get into floodplain. If you go west, you get into additional neighborhoods. We wanted to utilize that green space on the north end for the interchange that was the least impactful to homes. And then we chose a line, the north-south segment, that is the least impactful to homes.
Okay, so that section for the interchange is, as you put it, just a bunch of trees. But trees are really important. And I would also venture to say that Norman really cares about trees and our. But trees are really important and I would also venture to say that Norman really cares about trees and our environment. Um, and what trees do is filter our air. Um, what trees do in that section is, you know, ground our, our groundwater, um, filter our water to our lake. So how many trees are you proposing to take out in that section, all of them, some of them?
The, uh, we only clear typically the, uh, property that we need to, in order to build the facility. Uh, there are multiple locations throughout our network where we leave as many trees as we can. And in fact, we've gone back in a lot of locations and planted additional trees and joined, especially in the Tulsa area, with the, uh, uh, not-for-profit group Up With Trees. Uh, we've partnered with them to, uh, install and build additional tree, or, to plant and, uh, maintain additional trees throughout our right-of-way. I, I have no idea how many trees there are on that piece of property, though.
Sure, I didn't figure you could answer that question directly. Um, just saying that, you know, there's always an impact. So saying something is, oh, we wanna get there because it's just X, Y, and Z, doesn't necessarily mean that that's not going to have an impact for, you know, our community or our local environment. Um, so, talking a little bit more about the studies, um, where are you currently with that? Has that started? Are you currently in the process of your environmental studies, other impact studies?
The, the progress that's been made on this program is that at our January board meeting, we, uh, began an agreement with Poe and Associates to be program manager, uh, representing them as David Strebb sitting over my shoulder. Um, in February, we, uh, hired some right-of-way acquisition consultants. That's not for this section, uh, in particular, right now. What we're focused on is, on the Turner Turnpike, any additional right-of-way we need on some of these other corridors, some of these interchange projects, we needed to get a contract in place for them. Uh, this last week, we ordered the survey, the aerial survey had to be done this fast, uh, because it is impacted by, uh, uh, the spring greenup. So as, as trees gather, as trees gain leaves, the survey becomes less accurate. Um, and then we would have to go out and actually do field survey. I did not want any of our surveyors going on people's property at this stage in this process to do survey work. I wanted to make sure that we stayed, uh, as, remained as respectful as we could. So we did aerial survey. Uh, it, it was done this last weekend, as somebody, I think, pointed out.
Are those the markings that we've been, that the public has been seeing on roadways?
There have, uh-
Like the Chevrons and-
Yeah, I saw a picture, it's a Chevron that's something about this size. Uh, those are, uh, as I understand it, ground-truthy marks so that as they fly, they're, they're able to take a, a physical survey shot at those locations. And then as they fly at it with a LiDAR airplane, uh, they're able to tie those to a true, uh, survey point. Uh, so the, the, in the, in the process of, of this program, that's where we've gotten to. That information will be disseminated to some of the design engineers and then Ms. McCullough would probably, uh, be able to explain better where we are exactly in the environmental process.
I don't think that microphone is on.
Go on, here, you can come up here.
You can turn it on.
So, to your question about the environmental studies, where we are in our process now, like Joe alluded to, is, um, I work for Garver, we're part of the program management team and we're gonna be responsible for overseeing the environmental studies for the entire program. Um, we are very early in our process and we are right now planning our, our work, figuring out, um, what help we're gonna need, what specialists we're going to need to do the studies that we need to do, what corridor do we need to study. Um, you know, Joe pointed out the twelve-hundred-foot corridor, that's probably close to what we will end up studying, even though we know the corridor, the, the footprint of the roadway will be much smaller. We're going to study that footprint so that we know the, we have the information about what's out there. And that way, if the alignment does need to move, then we know what the impacts are going to be. So that work is going to start probably in the next month or so. Um, we're going to have teams of folks out in the field, on the ground. Um, and we will be notifying all the owners that we, uh, would like to enter their properties so that we can look for the environmental resources that are out there. Um, we'll have archaeologists, we'll have biologists, um, and they will be in teams identifying things like waters and wetlands. Um, we'll be looking for archaeological sites and historic sites. Um, we'll be identifying really, um, anything that, uh, we think is a potential constraint that we need to take into account when we're looking at the, at the alignments and where they're gonna end up being. So that's going to start in about a month. Um, we think it's going to take us probably the good part of a year to cover the entire program. Um, Joe mentioned that the, uh, sort of the priority that, uh, of projects and so our studies will probably follow that same priority so that we have the information as early as we can to provide to the engineers and make sure they have all the information about, um, where the alignments are gonna be.
Um, will the city have access to those final reports on environmental studies? Specifically for the sections that are related to, um, Norman?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, um, so how, in a timely manner? So when, when will those, as the sections are completed, or are we gonna have to wait a full year for the full program to be completed?
I don't see any reason that there would, you would need to wait. I mean, the only caveat that I would put on that is some of that information, particularly related to archaeological sites, is protected information, um, we don't want that being broadcast, um, but certainly for the, for the council's use. I think as, you know, as soon as that information is known, I don't see why we couldn't share it.
Okay, and who do we contact to get that information?
I guess that would be me or-
Hopefully, we're working through that, whoever the city assigns to work on that project.
To the mi, the mic, so that they can hear you.
I'm sorry, uh, hopefully, we're working through the, uh, whoever the city assigns to work with us on this project. Uh, we'll invite them to the meetings and then we'll address those, uh, address those concerns and those requests. As she stated, there will be some redacted information, again, it being, some of it being somewhat sensitive, uh, whether it, whether it's tribal or, um, um, you know, all, there are all kinds of things, reasons that it could be, uh, sensitive information. So we don't, we don't provide any personal, uh, property information, we will tell you what, what we found and, but sometimes we can't necessarily exactly tell you where, uh, right.
Um, and then what entities will you have to work with for that process? So Bureau of Reclamation, Oklahoma Department of Wildlife, like, what, what is the full scope of all the different agencies and entities?
So the entities that will be consulted are many of those that you mentioned. Um, the first step is the turnpike will contact kind of a, a, a huge list, kind of everyone you can think of, and ask for input, say, we're doing this program, we'd like to understand what your concerns are, um, you know, please contact us, let us know. And so that would go to all of the state, federal, and local agencies that have any oversight over land or resources within anywhere in the program. Now, we know that some of those agencies are, are going to definitely have more input and, and more concerns than others. We will be getting, um, permits from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers across the program. And so, we, that we anticipate, in fact, we've already met with them and will be, continue to meet with them to make sure that the information that we're collecting is the right information for them to be able to issue the permits that, that the turnpike will need and at the right scale and, and the right level of detail. Um, other agencies will certainly be U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. Um, they will have jurisdiction, of course, over threatened and endangered species and their habitat. The State Historic Preservation Officer will be another, um, important agency. We understand that around Lake Thunderbird, um, we could potentially be, um, interacting with the Bureau of Reclamation, given that they're the property owner at Lake Thunderbird. Of course, the Conservancy District, um, the park, all of the entities that have an interest in that property or any property across the program will all be consulted, requested input from, and then, you know, really, environmental is a process. It's about understanding the, the environment, what the project may or may not do to that environment, and then talking to the right people to figure out, okay, how do we best avoid or minimize impacts?
Thank you.
Sure.
Um, so we know that it's going to take about a year for the full program to get assessed for the environmental studies. Um, so how are there overlapping timelines for this project? So, you know, right-of-way access, other types of contractors, consultants, that are going to be kind of parallel to this? Um, and why are you operating in a parallel if we don't know yet what's happening with the environmental studies?
Yeah, would you speak to the-
Like, how can that happen?
Studies and, and that we've got, you know, about how some of them can be done relatively quickly and then some of them are the more of mitigation that we'll need to do through part of the design.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, could you just repeat so I understand?
Sure, so there are kind of multiple timelines that are going on here. So you're conducting environmental studies and that's going to take a year. Um, but other parts of the project are continuing to move forward without understanding the full scope of what you would need to mitigate, um, in terms of something coming back for an environmental, you know, point, especially around that we're worried about, you know, our watershed, Lake Thunderbird, the aquifer, you know, our wells coming offline. There's kind of a slew of things that are of concern to us as a city. Um, and I would say not just the south extension, but also the east-west connection because of Little River, um, which is a filtration zone for Lake Thunderbird, which is our drinking water. Um, and so I think for both of those sections, it's, you know, we, we've been giving a lot of attention to the south extension, but I want to make sure that we're, we're talking about both of this, we're talking about all of this together. So, sorry, to circle back.
Okay.
Um, how can we operate in multiple kind of routes at the same time without having a full understanding of the environmental impacts?
Okay, thank you for, um, for clarifying that. So the design, um, like Joe mentioned, the survey, um, and our environmental process are going to be ongoing concurrently and we're going to work really collaboratively as a team so that the designers understand the information that we're collecting and we understand the, sort of the goals and the thoughts behind their process. And we do have environmental information available now. It's high-level review, it's not field-based. So we have information that's really, that's publicly available for the most part on where things like rivers and streams and wetlands and archaeological sites and those things are, that we know about. Um, so that's a starting point for us. Um, things like cemeteries, we know, you know, uh, those are things we're going to avoid, we know that. There are other things that we know, well, we'd like to avoid if we can, um, but let's understand, you know, kind of the full scope of what we're looking at. So the design will, will move forward, it, it doesn't move so fast that we can't provide information along the way. Um, you know, they're going to be looking at alignments, looking at, at topography and, um, I'm not an engineer, but, um, you know, that, they look at those things while we're gathering information and we just share it as we move forward. So no final decisions are made until all of that information is collected.
Okay, um, so can you, I think, it's not environmental, I'm gonna ask some questions about right-of-way acquisition in kind of this parallel universe that we're, we're working on, these parallel timelines. So are those going to start before environmental studies are fully completed? Um, what is the timeline of that process?
So for the whole program, you know, like Joe said, we've started entering into contracts with right-of-way agents to secure property. And I think this covers the whole system, you know, so those agents will be utilized on the Turner, utilized up Will Rogers, utilized where needed. Um, in this area particularly, once we get far enough in design, which will be based off designers and based off environmental studies, when that point gets to a point that we're confident enough in the right-of-way is, has been established and safely established, at that point is when we'll start the right-of-way negotiations and start approaching landowners directly.
Is there a specific, um, percentage of design that needs to be completed before you start right-of-way acquisition?
Before we start approaching landowners, we, it's typically around sixty percent, um, design plan before we start approaching them. We can appro, we have had people approach us asking on total takes, once that we know, we can see on the alignments that, hey, the blue line, no matter where we shift, it's a total take. And to help, uh, at the landlord's request, if we're gonna get to a point far enough along that we're confident that it is gonna be a total take, um, we would, at the landlord's request, start that acquisition process with them.
Um, and at sixty percent of the design plan completed, how much of the environmental impact studies will have been also completed?
I don't know the schedule exactly and I think it varies from corridor to corridor when those sixty percent design plans will be done. It's not like the whole program's being designed simultaneously. Our environmental work will all be done upfront. So some of the corridors that are, that are top of the list, we're gonna focus on first so that we have that information. But at sixty percent, I would imagine that we are going to have the information all collected. Whether or not the, all the consultations and back and forth with all the agencies have been done at that point, I'm not sure. But I think we're going to have the information so that the designers know where the constraints are.
Okay, you understand my concern is that you're gonna start right-of-way acquisition and, you know, we're gonna be at sixty percent of the design and then we might potentially not have an environmental impact study to look at yet? And so you're gonna be reaching out to our property owners in Norman and we haven't yet seen studies? That's, that's a concern that I have, that I would think that my fellow council members would also have.
Understood.
Is, is there, is that, is that a no, is that a yes? Will, will we not have them? Can you, is that a question that you can answer now?
I think we can provide them as soon as they're complete, right, or as soon as we're-
Right, as soon as they're complete, so I, I would say yes, you will have that information.
Before you start right-of-way acquisition?
In most cases, I would think so.
I would think that's true, yes.
Okay, so that's a soft-
I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to, to dodge your question, I just honestly don't know exactly when all of these things are going to fall in place.
There are lots of parcels. You know, there, there'll be a time somewhere between now, somewhere between now and the sixty percent plan phase that Todd was mentioning where we'll know what the alignment's gonna be, we'll double-check that there's not one of the environmental issues that would, would stop that alignment. And at that time, we'd be, uh, you know, able to move forward with total takes if there was a willing seller, you know, if somebody was approaching us, which is what, uh, he was alluding to. We're not, uh, going out and purchasing, actively purchasing any property in an alignment that, that we don't think we can build on. So if there's something that exists someplace and those are the first things, the, the stuff that causes a no-go, so there's stuff we can have to avoid, there's stuff we can mitigate for. Um, if there is something we have to avoid, those are the first things that we will do to establish that alignment.
Okay, um, I still have more questions, but I'm, I'm gonna cede time to other council members. I know there's, they've got lots of questions as well and they'll probably cover some of mine. Um, but you can see that this is still really concerning in terms of the timeline. How do we plan as a city for our master plans, for our transportation plan, our land use plan, um, stormwater master plan, all of these things, when there are simultaneous timelines? We don't know when residents are going to, you know, get, um, approached for right-of-way acquisition, whether it's going to be a total taking, whether it's gonna be a partial property, where the exact alignment of these roads are gonna be, when we're gonna get the environmental impact studies completed. You know, it's all very squishy and that's something that is really concerning, um, for us as, um, you know, leaders in our community and trying to work with our residents and to assure them that, you know, we're gonna take all of the steps that we need to mitigate all of these impacts. Um, I, you're not providing me with any kind- You're not providing me with any kind of good feelings about, you know, the process moving forward. So, I'll say that and then let...
Thank you. And each council member, you know, I've got my sheet of questions as well, so I like that strategy. Let's try to limit it to a few at a time, and if for some reason your button doesn't re-click, just flag me down. Councilmember Studley.
All right. I feel like, I've got a lot of comments, more than I do questions. I definitely feel like you guys put the cart before the horse, and in your own admission, this is just a crayon drawing. You chose a route with a crayon and motive, and now you're scrambling to show how it could be the best route. And that's not how engineering works. You reverse-engineering this to fit your need. Right before this meeting, you guys were at a meeting, and I'm assuming you all were there, and Dr. Amy Serrato, apologize if I misspoke or mispronounced her name, but she had a lot of good information that she shared with you guys, and I hope that you really listened to that and took it to heart. One of the things that she mentioned that I thought was interesting was that all of the traffic studies that you guys have presented to the public in the past about why these routes are needed, not only 65% of your estimated traffic has actually come to fruition, so another 35% is way off base, and you guys don't have that amount of traffic on your current turnpikes. You kept touting and boasting a few times about how no state appropriations are made to you guys, and why would you need it when you can take the land as you want and do what you want with it? You had mentioned about this route going from Purcell to I-40, and you did a study. It was 87 minutes, is that right? Or what was the 87 minutes to go from Purcell to where?
The route from, the 87 minutes that was on that slide is using, utilizing I-35 during peak period today between Purcell and the north end of the Kickapoo, if you were headed north and east toward Tulsa, capturing the congestion that occurs both between, on I-35 between Purcell and I-240 and I-240 up to 40, and then that segment from 40 all the way back up to I-44, the Turner Turnpike.
Okay. And so, with the 87 minutes from Purcell to that area, you also had mentioned that Norman would be benefiting from this turnpike, and it would solve traffic issues in Norman. I don't see how driving from Purcell to up there with an 87-minute study is showing any kind of traffic issue solving in Norman. And I don't see anyone in the center of Norman driving all the way out east to catch a turnpike to go to Oklahoma City. That is not going to happen because that would put way more time on anyone's route. Let's see. You had mentioned that this wasn't going through any burial grounds, and I wanted to mention that there are Native Americans with loved ones who have loved ones buried on their property. And although the property is not federally considered tribal land, how are you planning on addressing those private grave sites?
So, like I said, we will be out in the field identifying environmental resources of many types. We will be asking property owners if they have information about whether it be burial sites or any other environmental information that would be helpful, to please let us know. So, if those are, if there are unmarked cemeteries, burial sites owned by anybody that are on a property that we ask to enter, then we would certainly ask for that information so that we can avoid it.
So, you would build the turnpike around it?
We would do our, I mean, we're, yes, we are not going to go through a cemetery.
Okay. Speaking of Native Americans, are they taking any care to displace, any care about displacing the most vulnerable populations such as elderly, economically disadvantaged, underrepresented minorities? Or are they planning to disperse these populations to minimize their voices and further disparage them by taking land that literally not can, literally cannot be replaced in this state? I think it's a joke to say that you can't at least estimate how many homes will be displaced and how many people will be displaced. You say that you can't estimate that, but then in one statement, you said whenever Councilmember Schuler was talking to you about how would that south patch, how did you guys figure that out? And you had made some mention about time and things like that, and then once she dragged the question out, and you thought she wanted you to say about the houses, you make sure that you didn't touch the most number of houses. How would you know that if you didn't do a house study, if you didn't know how many houses you were affecting? So, a lot of things that you're saying are contradicting the other things that you're saying. You can't say that you can't do an estimate of houses, but then you chose the route that avoided the most houses. You also mentioned that you were, that you've heard questions about why didn't these conversations start 15 years ago? And then you said, but we're here now. I think that's 15 years too late. And I think for you to say that it could have been a mistake whenever the mayor asked about the year 99, outer loop being shot down here in Norman, you said it could have been a mistake that you didn't talk to us, and I think that that's hogwash. You avoided it, fully you avoided it, because our city does not want that here. And I don't understand how you guys, as an authority in our state, could come and do this when it was voted against being done in our city in 1999 without at least having a conversation with the mayor, with our city planner, with our city manager, with everyone that's doing all of these things in our city. We're a big city. We make a lot of big decisions, and we make a lot of moves, and I feel like we do a pretty good job at working with people. But to blindside us like this and then act like you're playing nice is a load of crap, and I'm not down for it. That's all I got.
Thank you. Councilmember Tornarolo.
As you can see by these questions, we're demanding transparency. Everyone wants to know the who, what, why, and when. I mean, you've heard these questions, and we've had our conversations, Mr. Kelly, you and I, and your staff. You're asking for our residents in Ward 5 to give up property, livelihood, memories, birth, deaths, funerals, everything that makes a home, a home. These are not just structures, you know, these are memories. So, we took a run on Cinnamon Run, one of the home associations, the mayor and I, a couple of weeks ago. And I think you need to do the same thing, too. I think there are wildlife sanctuaries you need to visit, and talk to the residents. This should be part of the campaign to move forward. We're talking about individuals who have no place to go, and like Councilman Studley had just mentioned, it seems like we're taking advantage. It seems like the system is taking advantage of them with no recourse. So, do we tie ourselves to a tree, or do we have an institute, the Granny Brigade, to protect the homes? No place to go, okay? There was a lady that spread her husband's ashes around the property. That is priceless. How do you compensate her for that? Now, you may miss her house. Hopefully, you do, when you do your studies and, you know, the studies you have projected, and you miss these neighborhoods here. But I think you have to understand the gravity of what's happening here in Norman. You know, we are, the entire council is aligned on this 1,000%. You had made a mention when you started about no public funds being used for any turnpike project. So, there was a, your January 25, 2022 OTA regular meeting. In the minutes, item number 894, you guys had voted to take nearly $5 million in public funds. So, is that a contradiction, what you said earlier, that you guys don't take public funds for any projects? Or is that a mistake in the minutes? For project, it's Project SP-65, $4.9 million from the general fund.
Yeah, Councilman, I would have to read that agenda item in full. I don't know right off of what SP-65 is. So, that is the, that is OTA funds being utilized for the program manager contract. Those are not tax dollars. So, public funds, earlier when I made mention of that, I talked about tax dollars. So, ODOT represents the tax-supported system where they spend tax dollars collected either from the general fund or through fuel tax. When we build something, we either are selling bonds or we're leveraging our capital funds, which are a piece of the, mostly a piece of the toll collections.
Okay, so no public funds being used. This is all internal to OTA?
Yes, sir.
Correct?
Yes, sir. The one, and I'll say as an exception to that, is that we have two separate trusts, similar to a utility department. We have our 11 turnpikes that are currently, that I've had the list of that was shown earlier. There is a 12th, which is the Gilcrees Turnpike on the west side of Tulsa. It has had federal funds spent on it through ODOT and through INCOG in that area prior to the Turnpike Authority becoming involved in it about five or six years ago, six or seven years ago. At that time, we were going to build a bridge across the Arkansas River. That portion of the project had not been federalized at that time, if I remember right. Because there have been federal funds spent on that, we're, only state funds have been spent on our roadways unless we're in partnership with something with ODOT, where they're spending some federal funds on adjoining projects where we're just partnering. The Gilcrees stands alone on its own with federal funds having been spent on it. So, the toll rate at that location on that section of highway is not tied to the rest of our network, and it has its own separate bank account, if you will, in how it operates. So, that one, as a portion of our funding, we seeked a federal loan due to the... That project was not going to have an advantageous bond rating, so the interest rate was going to be high. One of our main goals is to provide a safe network. That's number one. And number two is to walk the thin line of keeping it, keeping our toll rates as low as we can so that it is affordable to traverse across Oklahoma and use, granted that you're, you have to pay a premium to drive on our network, but we maintain a high level of service. The Gilcrees, because it had to stand on its own, would have received a lower-level bond rating than our AA minus that we currently have. That would have artificially inflated the tolls beyond just the cost of construction. So, we seeked, we took out a TIFI loan with the federal government. That TIFI loan is a, I believe, 30-year note, no different than our, the bonds that we sell. It has a five-year delay to the first payment, so it gets to open hopefully this summer. It'll acquire, it'll begin to grow and ramp up in traffic, and then we'll make, we'll begin making the payments on the TIFI loan in five years, straight, yes. So, that aside, we don't get tax dollars, other than that portion of a loan we pay back. And it was because the interest rate, I think, was somewhere around 1.7% interest, so extremely low. Cheaper to build it today with the cost of inflation, the interest is actually negligible, more than you asked. I apologize.
Okay, I appreciate that. Again, you know, the big question mark and, you know, the why. You know, why are we doing this? What's the economics behind this? So, you know, historically, you guys have, you know, not met your expectations on revenue projections, on toll booths' revenue. In fact, is it true that historically it's only 63% of the revenues generated on each toll road?
I'm not sure. Dr. Serrato said that today at our board meeting, and I'm not privy to exactly where she got that information. I know from my own experience, and I can ask Julie to come up here to maybe provide some background on that if she has any, but I know from my own understanding that back in the 70s and 80s, the projections that were done were not met. But more recently, our projections are always exceeded in more recent times. Would you like to add to that?
Joe stated it accurately. Our traffic engineer is CDM Smith. They do our studies for our toll rates. They help us set those toll rates. They also work with us to set those projections. And in recent years, we have met our projections. I, again, I'm not sure where that number was quoted from today's meeting, but I would concur with what Joe has already said.
Would you guys release your revenue projections for the last 10, 15 years? Is that something you can do? So, we can actually see it?
We do have revenue projections in our annual budget.
Okay.
So, we can definitely provide that information to you. And that is available on our website as well.
All right, I appreciate that. I've got a bunch of questions, too, but I've got three more regarding a school in Ward 5, Lakeview Elementary School. So, have you guys considered the impact, like bus routes, to that school on the east side of Norman, to and from home, to and from other parts of the city? Have you guys considered that impact, bus route impacts to Lakeview Elementary School?
Thank you for pointing that out. The answer to that question is at this time, no, but that's definitely something we can take a look at. I will say that in the areas of the John Kilpatrick, where we just built an extension near two different schools on the John Kilpatrick, we still provide ingress and egress across at any existing open facility, so you can still get from one side of the highway to the other on a city street or county road. The other thing that typically comes up, and we began to talk about schools near any highway, whether that's a US highway, state highway, interstate, or toll road, is that we fence our property line, and we work with adjoining schools to make sure that, you know, the protection, the necessary protection is there to prevent kids from, you know, wandering out onto a highway. That's no different on a state highway in a rural community than it is a major highway in an urban community.
All right. When you guys do your studies, have you ever done any studies on population increase/decrease around your turnpikes? I mean, that does affect property tax values. It affects schools, for example, and I think it's as important as environmental studies. So, have you ever conducted studies about the population increase/decrease around the turnpikes?
I don't know. I'm not aware of any studies that exist like that, that the Turnpike Authority has done. I know that there have been some studies done by the State Chamber on impacts and development, housing development, commercial development. They've done some studies that exist, in particular on I-35, I believe, even some that exist for, that would exist for more in Norman. I think that they have a study that is in particular focused on the John Kilpatrick.
Okay. One last question before I cede my time to the other counselors. You know, taxpayer dollars goes into our roads out here in the east side and all over Norman. So, will you guys reimburse the city for any destruction to the roads and streets with your equipment as you are working this turnpike? So, is that something you've done in the past? For us, it's important. You know, roads are important here, especially in the rural side, in Ward 5, in my ward. And from past construction, we've seen destruction of roads. Is that something you guys will reimburse, or at least ensure, that destruction of the roads are not going to be impacted?
That is excellent foreshadowing to the issue that comes up with any heavy construction. When we built the Kickapoo, when we widened the Turner Turnpike up on the east end and around Creek County, that was the very first piece that was under construction quickly and early. The route was already set. The Turner widening will go faster than any new alignment because of that. We impacted some of the county roads with the equipment that's brought to and from the construction site. We are not required statutorily to improve area roads that we utilize through construction. Now, there's a caveat to that. We are also excellent neighbors, understanding that Creek County didn't ask for the Turner Turnpike to be widened, and neither is Norman asking for a new alignment within their city limits. As we impact and cause damage to local roads, we tried to build in a way that, and this one will be unique, and that we'll be able to gain access from the north side, hopefully... from the north side, hopefully from the turnpike alignment, and stay within our footprint for the most part. Understanding that legal loads are gonna, you know, be traveling, uh, these rural cities, city streets. We have partnered with, uh, the counties and even the City of O'Hara, Oklahoma County, uh, Oklahoma City, to do, uh, patching, to do, uh, the area where we were working in eastern Oklahoma County, the, the roads weren't in the best of shape before we got there. We did video and, and picture evidence before we started, so we had a, a baseline, so we could tell what impacts happened. Obviously, a, a loaded, uh, truck hauling rock or material to a project does significantly more damage than, uh, commuter traffic, or even, uh, home building traffic that could be in that area for some housing development. We pay attention to those things. We'd be happy to work with the city manager and, and the Public Works Office and the city engineers to, uh, monitor that and make adjustments going forward. The, you know, the, we would have the responsibility to give it back to, uh, the condition it was in prior to us be, being there. That's what I would feel would be responsible. But if we can partner and leverage resources through a, an intergovernmental agreement to provide a better, uh, to provide, provide something better than a patch, maybe an overlay, maybe a widening project, maybe an intersection project, could be a, uh, access project that, uh, better ties to the turnpike wherever we build an interchange, could be better access to and from the lake. Those are the kind of things that we wanna work with and partner with the, uh, City of Norman on, uh, going forward.
Well, I appreciate the, your answers, and, and just keep in mind, you know, these aren't questions we're throwing out, or we're just pulling out of thin air. We're all concerned about what's happening to our city. So, you know, I've got more questions. I'm gonna cede my time and allow my fellow council members to ask their questions, but, you know, there's a lot that we need answered, there's a lot that our constituents want answered, and, and we need to make sure that we ask those questions, and we may, you know, make sure you understand, and hope you understand that, you know, we need to have these questions answered.
Mayor, may I, uh, have one quick response? Because this, this issue keeps coming up, and I, I appreciate the statement. Councilmember Schuler, uh, goes back to something that you said earlier, and Councilmember Studley. The, we're, we're a month in, a little over a month into a fifteen-year long-range plan. We don't have all the answers, and we haven't, uh, talked to all property owners, and we, and we don't know the answers to a lot of these questions. We are very early on. We are here today trying to prepare and, and partner with the city going forward on what could be a very nice project. The, uh, the, the project, uh, here is, is not only for the city of Norman. By taking some of that traffic, whether it's the existing traffic or the growing traffic off of I-35, I-35 residents in Norman, or Norman residents that utilize I-35 will benefit. That traffic is going to grow on I-35. ODOT has lots of plans in their eight-year plan to do, uh, operational improvements to the interchanges. They don't have a plan to add additional lanes. So I, I, I just wanna back up and touch on that, that we're very early on in this process, that we're trying to come up with as many answers as we can, uh, and we are willing to meet with any of you and all of you individually offline or here to, uh, however it needs to take place to address as many of these concerns as we can. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Peacock?
Thank you. On average, how many acres are required for a typical turnpike interchange?
Uh, I, I wouldn't know that number offhand.
Can you best guess? You guys have done a lot of these across the state.
Yeah, but I, I know about what they cost, I don't necessarily know, uh, exactly the number of acres. A lot of the times, the terrain i- is a major factor with that, uh, whether the interchange is coming to a stop sign, or a stoplight, or a big interchange, you know. ODOT's got some pretty major interchanges in, in Oklahoma County and in Cleveland County having to do with I-35 and I-240 and some of those, they're, they're multiple acre interchanges. But I don't know the exact number, uh, and that would vary, again, depending on the exact location and the, how they're tied together.
Sure. Do you know how many acres that, uh, that wooded property is on the east side of Norman that you were proposing the one large interchange in?
No, sir.
Just for comparison's sake? Okay. How much of the proposed project budget is dedicated to environmental remediation?
I know we have an, a, uh, an environmental estimate, I think, within, built into this. Do you have that number? Or know a number?
I don't. Try to get to. So by remediation, are you referring to like cleanup of materials? Are you referring to mitigation?
I think either or.
Okay. Yeah, and I don't think the budget, um, go ahead.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you're fine. I think until we know exactly what needs to be mitigated or remediated, we, we can't really put a number to that yet. But, you know, the turnpike will come up with, with the best solution in consultation with those agencies. I don't think they're gonna be, you know, there's not a, a cap or a number that we say, this is as much as we're gonna spend and no more.
But there are no dedicated funds particularly?
I'm sorry?
There are no dedicated funds, per se?
Nothing that's been earmarked specifically as far as I know.
We don't earmark like that, uh, our funds.
Okay. Are you familiar with a phenomenon called induced demand?
Induced demand?
Yes, sir.
Oh, sir?
It's this idea that, you know, the, just by increasing roadway capacity, it encourages more people to drive and thus failing to improve congestion. So I just think that that's something you guys really need to look into if you haven't already. Has the OTA studied the changing demographics regarding car ownership and younger generations?
Uh, the answer to that would be no. We haven't studied that.
Okay, I have, I had a follow-up on that, if your traffic forecasting, you know, took into those new trends, that there will likely be less individual drivers on the road in the future.
Uh, understand that. I have, uh, been a part of several, uh, seminars and presentations having to do with autonomous vehicles, right, uh, vehicle share that could be in the future, uh, a lot of the things that, and there are conflicting opinions on that, depending on, like, my kids or my grandparents that don't drive a whole lot. Might would utilize an autonomous vehicle and generate additional trips. I've also heard that because there will be less vehicle ownership, uh, because people would share vehicles, that that might generate fewer trips. The other side of that is that, uh, a vehicle drops you, sir, off at work and then comes to pick, to comes to my house to pick me up, to take me to work, and then goes and picks somebody else up, that actually generated two trips to take you to work, and one and a half, or one trip to come and get me. So there's some conflicting in, in, information that I'm, I'm aware of, but I'm no long, no, no way a, uh, an expert on that.
Understandable. Has the OTA studied vehicle emissions from a large number of cars currently traveling on existing turnpikes?
Uh, the answer to that is no. We do know that the congestion on I-35 contributes heavily to the, um, uh, in any standstill traffic, uh, whether it's on I-35 or I-44 or other roads contributes heavily to, um, lost the word. To the emissions in the area, I'm sorry.
Would you, uh, would you care to postulate how those emissions might impact Little River or Lake Thunderbird, that's, that is our drinking supply, as other peoples have mentioned?
Uh, I have no information on that at this time.
Okay. So in, in your presentation, you pointed to a lot of nega- negative impacts from traffic, such as accidents, congestion, increased travel time. Given all these, why hasn't the OTA embraced the more sustainable transit options such as passenger rail, which would eliminate all of those negative impacts while simultaneously not damaging the environment or taking people's homes?
I appreciate you bringing up the passenger rail, uh, discussion. Nothing that we are proposing in this plan inhibits, uh, the possibility of future passenger rail, uh, nothing that ODOT is doing, uh, either inhibits that. And, and in fact, at where we're proposing to cross the BNSF, I'm sure that as we consult with them on their needs and desires in that location, will provide additional, uh, space for, I'm sure they'll, would like for us to provide additional space for future rail lines. The reality there is that, uh, you know, for the, for the traffic that we're talking about, hundreds of thousands of vehicles a day, growing to, uh, a hundred thousand vehicles a day, growing to two hundred thousand vehicles a day, the number of people in those vehicles, a, uh, regional transit rail line, even running multiple trains full of people, doesn't have a significant impact on congestion, on the people who are in the vehicles. We, we're in support of regional transit and the rail line. I'm aware of it, I've been to a couple of the meetings on it in the past, both in my, while I was still at ODOT, and, uh, even since I've been at the Turnpike Authority, 'cause I like to understand where that is and how it's moving forward. But...
Appreciate your answers, thank you.
Follow-up on the commuter rail. Why don't ODOT pay for that, instead of making taxpayers pay for it through the RTA?
Again, this is Brian Taylor, the chief engineer for the Oklahoma Department of Transportation.
Excellent.
Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity. Your question, why does ODOT not pay for commuter, or pay for commuter rail? First, ODOT supports all forms of transportation. Commuter rail is typically supported by the community, and the community is one of the pers- one of the funding parties that bring it forward. We'll certainly be a part of it, but we're not, uh, we are not, uh, the, the, we should not be the, uh, sole provider for rail, for commuter rail. We're certainly supportive of it. When you look at the other areas where commuter rail existed, it existed as communities coming together and funding it by communities. We're certainly in support of that, and we're more than willing to help.
Well, hopefully, we can maybe lead the way and change that perspective, 'cause it is transportation, so it would seem like a good fit there. We will turn to Councilmember Hall.
Okay, thank you for coming tonight and talking to us. We appreciate you being here and bringing your team with you. We have covered a lot of territories, so I'm gonna run through, um, maybe a few things that we haven't completely touched on yet. But to follow up on this whole thought of, um, um, regional transit and commuter rail that, um, our regional transit authority and ACOG has been working on for decades, so I'm just wondering what the intersection is, um, with your conversations as you develop the Access Oklahoma Plan, is there, is, are there any conversations going on, on how that meshes with decades-long work that ACOG, um, has moved towards? We've created a regional transit authority, and, um, I'm just wondering how you collaborate or coordinate along those lines.
Thank you for that. We have, um, reached out and visited a, a couple times with ACOG, um, specifically about this program, just in the last, uh, month and a half or two months. The other thing that we've, uh, participated with ACOG on is, is gathering some of the traffic numbers that they have for the, uh, the, the area that ODOT, uh, oversees, being the interstate, has in pavement readers, that they're, they're picking up some of that traffic. Uh, ACOG, we, we got some of the information from them for Indian Hills Road for, uh, some of the area streets. So we are visiting with ACOG. We have, uh, not met specifically to discuss, that I'm aware of, the commuter rail.
Okay. I also just want to, um, make a more general comment about, um, there's obviously a dramatic impact on the rural part of our city and our community in Ward Five and the east side of town. We've been really focused on that, but, um, also, I don't think it's, um, an understatement when the mayor says that this changes the character of our city completely. And, um, so any of these decisions and any of the, um, ability to have an interaction or an impact on how this goes, um, really affects every single person in Norman. And, um, I'm wondering if you've ever had a project that literally affects the watershed, not only for our city, but for two other cities, Norman and Oklahoma City, and also impacts the delivery of water to not only Norman, but, um, to Midwest City and Dell City. So it's not only impacting our water supply, but it also has regional, um, implications of, you know, how we move forward with that. And I think, um, obviously, you've picked up on that is, um, there are many areas of concern, but the environmental impact and the impact on our watershed and the fact that we already are dealing with an impaired water supply in Lake Thunderbird. So, you know, the impact there is not only on our city, it's on our regional partners, and how the, our water is supplied. So, is there any kind of discussions with other municipalities whose water supply is literally gonna be affected?
So the answer to your, uh, question is no. The, but I, I, we, uh, cross in, in two locations, the, and, and are built all in the watershed for, uh, uh, Lake Overholser. We're built, uh, in the watershed for, um, Hefner Lake here in the metro area. I-40, uh, and US-69 cross the, uh, Lake Ufala in several locations. There are state highways and, and, uh, turnpikes that impact Grand Lake that we, we cross a lot of watersheds. Lake Thunderbird will be a little bit different, uh, for us. During, uh, the construction of the Kickapoo, we, uh, were in the watershed for West Watkins Reservoir. So we've, we've worked in a lot of those locations. One thing that I think's important to, to point out, and we know that, we know that, uh, that the area that we're, we're proposing, uh, has some wetlands in it, uh, I'm sure, I just know that for a fact. When we impact wetlands, we usually have to mitigate for those at some form of ratio. So if we take out an acre, it's usually required that we gotta put back two acres or more. And as we get on the, as we look at the west side of Lake Thunderbird, and I, uh, was made aware, and I don't remember who told me, but somebody said that, that, uh, the city of Norman was looking for some additional funds to work on, uh, water quality out at Lake Thunderbird, and I, I'm not, I, I don't have any intimate knowledge about it, I just know that it's being talked about. As we, uh, work in that area, we, we will need to mitigate, uh, and build wetlands someplace. On previous projects, we have done that on OTA property where we maintain it into the, into the future, we've done it where, where that property has become property of, uh, a municipality, uh, or have done it, uh, even in locations, uh, where it's been done on private property to build additional wetlands. So, uh, with this project, could be the opportunity to improve, uh, in that case, the water quality, or at least, uh, work with, um, folks that are expert in those areas to, to do that for Lake Thunderbird.
I, while I understand that, um, I'm really interested in learning about how we actually talk about the mitigation and that kind of thing, and, you know, again, to just kind of give the story of Norman, um, there have been, um, years' worth of city councils when none of us were here, that had made decision after decision after decision to, to, uh, protect our watershed, to limit development on the east side of town. I mean, one of the reasons we annexed a large part of East Norman is to protect our watershed. And so, um, it, it's just hard to wrap your head around how even the most aggressive mitigation, um, strategies are going to fit with what our plan has been for years. I mean, it was brought up briefly, and I don't wanna spend too much time on it, but it literally, um, has direct access on our land use plan, our transportation plan, our stormwater plan, all of these things have been built over years with studies done over years, and I don't see any way around having to update all of those things. And, um, the, there's just a lot of implications that, um, no matter, no matter what you can do, is it enough to completely disrupt, um, a portion of our community that was never intended to acc-? to accommodate a turnpike? So, that leads back to some of our conversation about the environmental impact, and I'm encouraged to know that you have a long list of resources that you're going to contact. I would actually like to see that list of resources, and I'm wondering if it also includes contacting nonprofit agencies in particular. You may or may not already be aware that we have a nonprofit agency that makes a difference, not only in our community, but regionally, Wild Care, and there's very direct impacts on them. I think there are other nonprofit agencies that have some concerns, so would those be entities that you would also add to your list to consult?
Sure. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a good point, and I think you bring up something that's important, which is that agencies and people with, with jurisdiction over resources certainly need to be involved, but there are others that also need the opportunity to give input. And so, we welcome input from anybody at any time, and whether we send a letter that says, please give us your input or not, we, we welcome that. And there's a way to, I think, submit comments on the website, there's certainly ways to contact our team, especially when it comes to, you know, there are resources in the, in the area, in the environment, that need to be considered. So, yes, I would say that, that nonprofit, if there are others, we would take those recommendations and add them to our list, and I'm happy to share the list that, that we've already compiled.
Okay. And I'm not, I've got a couple of other questions, but I also have a question just for our city manager. I don't know how we actually coordinate that, or if we involve our own communications director, but I think it's really important to have very specific pass or identify exactly what you're saying. Who do you contact? How do you contact them? I also took note, and want to repeat it, of what you said earlier, that you're also interested in individuals who may have information that you would never have access to, i.e. the resident that, who scattered her husband's ashes on their property. I think that we have a lot of property owners in rural Norman that have held that property for a very long period of time, that will probably have access to things that you may not be able to discover on your own. So, I want to make sure that we have a very clear path on how people contact you. And so, obviously, you are interested in gathering input, so when you encounter resistance or, you know, with information, then what happens? I mean, how do you mitigate it? How do you negotiate? How do you arrive at some kind of satisfactory conclusion?
Sure. So, all of the information that we gather, whether it be through our own studies, or through information that we get from the public, or from other agencies, is all looked at, at holistically, in terms of what's in the corridor, what's the best solution to, you know, to meet the needs of the project, but also minimize impacts as much as possible. So, mitigation will take different forms, depending on the resource impacted, the wishes and desires of either the person involved or the agency involved. And it, so it's, it's a conversation that occurs, once we know more about what the impact's going to be. You know, there are typical things that are done. Joe talked about wetland creation and maintenance. That's one solution that can be done for, for waters. There may be others. You know, the nice thing about some of this process is that's up to us as, as OTA and as the community, to kind of come to that solution together.
Okay. Then, the, the other thing that I was wondering about is, when you're doing these environmental impact studies, what, what standard are you using? And I don't know the answer to this, but it is my understanding that there is a difference from meeting state-level environmental impact benchmarks versus federal environmental impact benchmarks. So, for example, our lake is managed by a federal agency, the Bureau of Reclamation. And I believe, at least in your current information that's offered on the website, that it appears that there are multiple places where it does cross Bureau of Reclamation authority, I guess. So, does that kick in to a federal environmental study?
Yes. So, there are differences, like you mentioned, between federally funded, or permitted, or projects across federal land. Do you have to follow a different environmental process than the turnpike would normally have to follow, if they're not using federal funds, or any of that? So, in the case of Lake Thunderbird, where there is that federal property, if we did end up with an alignment that wanted to use any of that property, then we would be in a federal environmental, what we call the National Environmental Policy Act, NEPA. We would be in a situation where that would be, that would apply.
Okay. And can you describe, or just compare and contrast in a general kind of way, what the difference is in the benchmarks?
Right. Yep. You're fine. Right. That, so, the studies that we do, and I, the permits that we're getting from the US Army Corps of Engineers that I mentioned, those are federal permits. And so, the studies that we're doing are all done to comply with federal law that covers all of those environmental resources. So, regardless of the fact that the turnpike is not federally funded, and even on parts of the program that are not on federal land, all of those studies will be done to meet requirements of federal law, Endangered Species Act, National Historic Preservation Act, Clean Water Act.
Okay.
So, there's no difference in the way we conduct our studies for the turnpike versus what we would do for ODOT, or any other agency that had federal funds.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that, because I think that's been a big misunderstanding.
Yes.
So, I guess my final question for you would be, how can we better align getting, which seems like to me a very in-depth studies that need to be done, as you mentioned, with all of these different agencies, wildlife, endangered species, geologic formations, the, you know, federal authority over the lake, the fact that we're an impaired lake, and you were working with DEQ to meet their requirements? It, it is concerning that we're going to be maybe getting the cart before the horse before we have a complete understanding of what all of the impacts are, because I think we all expect that to be considerable, and that the mitigation of any of it, or all of it, would really have to be worked out before we advance very much farther on doing these other right-of-way acquisitions and stuff like that. So, I don't know how we move the needle there, to have that, that information up front, because, like I said, I'm only really concentrating on the environment, there's lots of other lanes here, but I would say that because it is a direct threat to an already impaired water source, that that is a fundamental understanding that we have, no matter what. And, you know, to your point, Mr. Kelly, about why you think this is important in diverting traffic and all of that kind of thing, it's been really hard to understand what the cost to benefit is for the city of Norman. I understand what you're saying about diverting freight, commercial trucks, and that kind of thing, but it's, it's just really, I haven't figured out yet, a real plus side of how this benefits the city of Norman in any way. It's, it's diverting traffic, it's maybe making easier for commuters to use I-35, I get that, but the cost to our community is enormous. So, that's, I think, you know, what we're really trying to sort out. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And building on that, you know, some people will say, well, it's just a road, like, what's it going to do to your environment? And you can kind of overlook even the emissions from the vehicle, but what about the development that will follow? I mean, future councils are going to have to do, I'm glad I hopefully only have one more term left in maybe, because that's going to be an ongoing battle to try and protect it, and the, the door was opened because of this turnpike that we didn't ask for. So, your battle may be over when you start turning dirt, but it will be a forever battle for the city of Norman. And again, it's not just the touchy-feely feel-good, I love birds, it's our drinking water, which is a really big deal. But I want to switch directions a little bit and talk more about the homes impacted. So, we have no idea how many homes are going to be impacted, but with the previous extensions, it seems that the one that's coming through the, the south extension is going to be significantly more than any other communities have faced before. Would that be accurate?
Again, I don't know the exact number, so I can't speak to it. I do not think it's significantly more than have been impacted on any other route that we've done in a, near to a metropolitan area like Norman. Do, will we impact homes? I'm sure that we will. I don't know the number, and it's not more than we ran into probably on the Kickapoo.
Good. Well, it sounds like you have a kind of frame of reference to answer this next question. What percent of the homeowners that were forced to relocate actually stayed in that city? Because we're losing residents, ad valorem, and sales tax revenue from these residents that are now going to be displaced.
I don't have an answer to that question.
So, that'll be another fallout that the city of Norman will have to deal with, simply to relieve traffic. So, in terms of ad valorem, I, you know, right now, it's the city asking these questions, but, you know, we have ad valorem partners here as well. Are you going to reimburse them for the property valuation that we've lost because of the impact to ad valorem overall?
I don't know the answer exactly to that question. I don't think that that's been done before.
Well, we're going to do a whole lot of new things in Norman, Oklahoma, this time around. So, another question that I had, how long will it take to pay off the $5 billion in bonds?
Each of the, typically, we sell bonds in, in 30-year, we sell 30-year bonds. We don't anticipate a bond sale for about another year to fund the early initiative We're not going to sell $5 billion in bonds next year, so it'll be a correlation of how fast, and how fast we're spending it, to how fast we need the money, whatever year the last bond sale would be in, it'd be 30 years from that year to pay off this initiative, which, again, is not just this piece, but the, includes the widening on the Will Rogers and Turner, and all the improvements that are being made other places.
I think the wild card, too, is just the economy, not just the local economy, but national economy, with interest rates and all of that fun stuff. I think it'll be more expensive for you, for your building process, like it is for everyone building anything, but then, it's going to be more expensive to buy homes for these people that are also displaced. So, is there going to be any sort of consideration to the change of the market, when people are having to look for new places to live?
So, the appraisal values, and Mr. Gore can speak to this, but the appraisals, when we, when we're doing them for properties, will be done, will be done at, at the time of the acquisition, so that means that if somebody waits to have their property purchased, I want to back up. There, there are multiple options that we have, that we're able to utilize when we have a long-range plan like this. There are, there are multiple pieces and phases to this, as I stepped through the five priorities earlier on. If somebody, if, if, somebody's property is in a, or, a couple of different ways of, of this happening, but if somebody's property is in a later phase, or the actual home itself is not impacted. This happened several times on the Kickapoo, where they had a, a long piece of property, their house was up on the, on Luther Road, for instance, and we crossed somewhere in the back, and they operated a, a farming operation of some kind, but it was so impacted that they elected and negotiated a total take. So, we bought the entire piece of property, whatever that was. We enter into, we entered into, on several occasions, long-term lease agreements, not anything where we're actually charging. It's a part of the negotiation of their settlement, for them to remain in the home. So, we pay them, and then they can stay living there, and we did that on 12-month terms, and then would extend it as necessary. Very rarely, understanding that the housing market is different today, very rarely did somebody go beyond four or five months before they found a different house that they wanted to move to. I don't know where, we don't keep track of where people move to after we acquire property, or where they purchase additional property. The other thing that happens sometimes through our right-of-way acquisition process is we do what we call land swaps, where maybe that person that I just talked about, who had, we only impacted a few acres, and they had 15 or something on the front side, and then the adjoining neighbor still wants to live in their house, and, and instead of compensation through a cash compensation, they seek for a land swap, in, in which case, we would have purchased neighboring property, maybe, and were able to enter into a land swap. That does happen, or, or at least we work on it. Whatever, we try to be flexible and, and do whatever we can to make sure that both parties are as happy as they can be, understanding that they didn't ask us to come and purchase our property, and they didn't have a for-sale sign in their yard most of the time.
So, let's talk Rose Rocks. That's another key piece of this unique environment that we're putting a turnpike on top of. What's been your conversation about that unique geological wonder in that area?
Kirsten's the expert on this, obviously. I have known that there are Rose Rocks in Oklahoma. I'm from southeastern Oklahoma originally, and I've known there are Rose Rocks in Oklahoma. Up until a few weeks ago, I was unaware of the concentration that was in this area, so it'll be interesting. And, and a lot of places I've gone, people have shown me Rose Rocks. Dr. Serato brought one today that was about this big. Somebody else described one that was multiple feet by multiple feet in size. Those were all things that are very interesting, very interesting to me. Please go ahead.
So, he says I'm an expert, but I'm not a geologist, so can't claim to be a Rose Rock expert. However, we, we do know their significance to not only this area, but, but to the state as a whole, and their uniqueness, and, and as a cultural symbol, as a state rock of Oklahoma. We have spoken with Dr. Serato about the, the outcrop of sandstone that occurs where these things form, and have asked her to provide us with information about specific locations, so that, again, we can map those, along with all of the other environmental information that we'll be mapping, and then can, again, assess where our, our corridor may, may or may not intersect with, with those rocks.
So, we're, we haven't done any studies. I understand that's in the process. That'd be another suggestion going forward. You know, we like to make data-driven decisions here in Norman, so it'd be nice to have data before you make life-changing decisions. So, let's say the data rolls out, and the traffic shows it's really not going to lighten much, or the environmental impact is so devastating. Like, what is it going to have to get to for you to go, you know what, this just isn't worth it, or it's not appropriate? Like...
Yeah.
You want to speak to the environmental parts?
Well, okay. So, I think it's a general question about, at what point does it become not worth it?
Yeah.
Is that what you mean?
I don't know the answer to that, standing here today. We are data-driven, or at least we try to be. I, I think that we're going to continue to weigh this information as it comes in, both the survey information that we just gathered, the engineering information, and then the environmental information as it's being provided. And, again, the goal that I would have is to work with the city, or partner with the city, if you will, and work with the city manager, public works director, and your engineers, to make this project the best that it can be. If we run into something that creates a no-go situation, and I don't know what that is, standing here today, then we will back up and punt, and figure out what the next step is. There's enough, I, I don't think that there's going to be something out there, but there could be, so I want to leave myself the leeway to say that, but I, I don't have an answer beyond, beyond, I really don't know what exactly that final straw would be that would create us, create a situation where this would stop.
Sure. If we found a bunch of oil, it would stop, and we'd find a way around it. But, so, I guess, you know, it's, it's just obviously concerning. Everyone's very emotional, it's hard not to be. You know, I really appreciated Councilmember Peacock's questioning about, you know, we're looking towards solving today's problems, not looking towards a future that looks at transportation differently, that's actually more environmentally friendly. Like, we're banking on continuing to destroy our climate and the environment, which is sad. I think we should be planning in a different direction. I think we should be planning in a different direction, but I'm obviously not in your position. So that's concerning. The people aspect that Councilmember Tortorello mentioned, I mean, the woman showed me the pictures of her home and her dead husband and, and had tears in her eyes as she told me about the ashes she spread in the house they just gave to their children. I don't know how you put a price on that. It is, it is. And then the environmental, the, the, how, how much public input was taken? I mean, none, right? This is purely data driven, not people driven.
Thank you for bringing that up. And it's actually something that if I can turn back to the screen for just one second that we have just recently posted, actually, I think this went up earlier today. Under the updates tab, we have listed out and scheduled the public meetings for this south extension and the east west loop connector. So we have Noble, Newcastle, Norman and more locations established here. We've been actively working on this for several weeks. And this is the first time that it's really being made public is, is right here, right now. Secretary Gatz read these off this morning. I wanted to stop and pause right here on the public meetings piece because we're going to update this. And the other thing that's glaring at me at the bottom of the screen is the podcast. So Kirsten McCullough did a podcast on environmental. I think it's located under, under some of the frequently asked questions or maybe it's under the. Media portion that's up at the top. I don't see media now. So there's a podcast that's there that I think that one is, is long and it's me walking through the entire program. You can skip through it and hear basically what I, I think I probably said today, having to do with the, the south highways. But there's also a podcast and I don't want to fish around for it in front of everybody. But there's one that's directed specifically to the environmental aspects of this particular segment of road. And we're going to continue to update those as information comes. This engineering and building of roads is, is not very glamorous during this phase. And so there's not a lot that, that people really want to tune into. We will provide updates as we get them and it's, and it's slow. It doesn't just happen overnight. We're going to work over the next several months and we'll provide updates through this. So again, just want to continue to point people to this accessOklahoma.com website.
Well, thank you for providing these dates. When I had met with Secretary Gatz, he said that they were coming. So I'm, I'm sure you'll have a lively turnout on Tuesday, April 19th at the Central Library, which is a beautiful building, by the way. So I, I know that this is very hard on all of you. It's probably the least favorite part of your job. We make tough decisions every time. I led during a pandemic, not one decision was easy. I get it and someone's got to lose. But I think I made decisions that were best for my community. At that moment and long term, because I considered the people. And what you're about to do is you can't undo it. You just can't. I mean, we don't have a time machine, so we can't go back and untraumatize a large portion of our community. You've met some of them, I hear. And it's just beginning. So I know your job's not easy and I know it's not personal, but I do not think this is the right course of action, at least the right area. And I'm, my council agrees. Many of our residents agree, obviously the ones directly impacted by it. And so I'll, I'll look at you just like I did Secretary Gatz and ask you, don't do this in Norman. On the record, in front of my colleagues, in front of YouTube makes it real. Just don't. And they're not going to make it easy for you. I can sit back and let the residents take over because their stories matter. I've asked the city manager to send out a letter to the properties impacted that we can tell with this, you know, 1,200 foot area. Because I want to hear these stories and I want to share them with the public and I want to share them with you. Because at the end of the day, I hope you're able to sit back and say it was worth it for traffic. It's so impersonal. And it's certainly not the kind of Oklahoma standard that I've become accustomed to since I've moved here. So. Councilmember Schuler.
I guess more comments at this point, just kind of underscoring some of the other things that my fellow councilmembers have said. And. I really, really want to highlight what Councilmember Peacock was talking about in terms of thinking about the longevity of not only this toll road, but really thinking about what this impact is to our community. I was, I went along with Councilmember Peacock, Councilmember Hall to a conference this last week, the Congress for New Urbanism. And I kid you not, there were multiple sessions and multiple times that we heard about communities either asking to and, you know, working through the process to tear down or relocate interstate highways because of the impacts, the negative impacts that they have on their cities. And they said that there are 60 communities across this nation that are currently seeking that process. I'm really concerned that if we do this, that Norman is going to be one of those communities 50 years from now. And talking about the impacts and how this is going to substantially change what this means for our community and how it is splitting us in half. I, I don't have a lot of faith in what our nation has done with the interstate highway system and thinking about communities and how they have split populations, specifically, you know, underrepresented and marginalized communities in our country. And so, I mean, I can't help but hearken back to those things and think about what is this going to do to our community and how is that going to, you know, continually impact us? So I think what we're trying to do here is not get to that point where 50, 100 years down the road, we didn't think about all of the mitigations now to not do something and to think about another way, another route, another opportunity, another mode of transportation that, you know, was going to serve us better. And I think that that's really where a lot of us are. What does this do for Norman? How does this impact us? What is our future? And so I think I'll just leave kind of my comments there. For now.
Councilmember Tortorello.
I want to thank you guys for showing up tonight and we're usually hospitable, but this is something that we strongly believe that we're all in alignment, that we are against this, this, this road. And I'm going to echo the same thing we've been echoing for the last month and a half since this was announced or month is that don't do this to Norman. We don't want this here. There's no economic value to the city of Norman. In fact, this bypasses the city of Norman. There are no stops, there's nothing they can get off and there's no place they can visit. It's a bypass. It's like flying over Oklahoma, you know, that term flyover country. That's what you're going to make us. You're going to make us drive over, drive through country and we don't want this. My constituents were there today. They showed up and, and they voiced their opinion and I'm, I'm in agreement with this that, you know, I'm going to let them run with this too. They're telling you that they don't want this and, and there are a lot of stories. And, you know, we are data driven, but we are also in this case here, people driven. And, and we'd, we'd like you to come by and visit these families and these homes and in wild care and wildlife and see the impact of this road, the impact of this turnpike, which we just don't see any value. Going back to the public discussions today, some were asking, they, on your agenda, you said that there are public discussions or the public can speak. Do they have to sign up for those the next time they want to come by and talk to you guys at OTA for your regular meetings, your board meetings?
To add an agenda item to an agenda, the way this worked this time, I was not a part of the last program when people were allowed to speak. But the way this worked this time, a request made by Dr. Serrato, she was the only request that we received this go around for this board meeting. We were able to accommodate that request with some parameters. She was given a time limit and, and obviously our board was not there to answer any questions. Those types of avenues are going to be better served. Those, those types of questions are going to be better served at these public meetings. We're going to provide all the experts there. The people that we have here today are individuals, but they have teams that will be able to answer questions of every individual and their individual question, which is unique at those meetings. But that's how that process was with Dr. Serrato for this morning.
Okay. I'm going back to NEPA, I want to circle back on that. Are you agreeing to a voluntary study? Through the reclamation process, the zone using NEPA? I just want to clarify, I know we discussed this, Councilman Hall brought it up, you'd answered that question, but are you guys going to conduct a NEPA study? Is that on the radar? It's, it's part of all your environmental studies?
So I think I can say that we are going to perform NEPA at the, in the federal box areas where we intersect the interstate, both I-44, I-35 in two locations and I-40. The section that was in discussion earlier around the lake, there are still some questions that exist around that. So I don't want to. I don't know the answer to that because if a design is, if a design alternative takes us out of lake property, then that may change the answer that I would give today to that question. If we just assume that we are impacting Bureau of Reclamation property. So the, the answer is yes, in the federal boxes. The answer is maybe, depending on the impacts in that area and the property that we actually end up impacting. And I don't, I just don't know the answer to that question. Not trying to dodge it. As soon as I know the answer, be happy to come back and answer yes or no.
Thank you. I had a bunch of questions, but they're already answered, but I have one for the city manager, maybe Sean O'Leary. When do we plan to do a study of the traffic patterns out there if this turnpike comes to fruition? I mean, we need egress, ingress. I mean, it's going to cause a nightmare for ambulance, first responders. I mean, is that something in our radar?
Councilmember Tortorello, that's a conversation and a staff recommendation. With council concurrence, our ability to form our internal team consisting of Mr. O'Leary and, and his transportation engineers and Mrs. Tiffany Vrska, our chief communications officer, the ability to stay plugged into the, all of the, you know, multiple concurrent tasks that the OTA will engage in, we think will be mission critical in terms of our ability to provide our council with current information that we can then share with the public. And perhaps at the early stages of this process, that staff would commit to monthly updates that we would send out, maybe at the, the last week of every month, our weekly reports that go out, we could dedicate an entire section to, here's the current status of all of these steps engaged by the OTA. And, and we, Mr. O'Leary and his team, they're plugged in at, at, you know, ACOG and ODOT regularly. We have not been, you know, a, a regular component of OTA because up until this project, it really wasn't a function of, of Norman's transportation plan. But we would like to engage with the OTA and a couple of council members have indicated things like, we have a comprehensive plan and it describes land uses and zoning and how Norman will grow in the future. And obviously that changes pretty dramatically when you change circulation. We have a, a transportation plan that we would need to update. And based on transportation and land use, could absolutely have an impact on our sewer master plan and our water master plan. And we know we've got wells that are right under the blue line, some going east and west and some going north and south. So mitigation measures that we would pursue through this process would include the ability to update the comprehensive plan, transportation plan, sewer master plan, water master plan, and even storm, stormwater master plans. So we would like to work at council's direction to bring to you those proposals on how we will update those plans that will impact how Norman grows. And even on a, maybe even a more pressing matter, we have a voter approved project. It was bond approved, I believe in 2012, Mr. O'Leary at the 36th Avenue Northwest widening project that would go from Tecumseh to Indian Hills, including a substantial investment in the intersection of Indian Hills and 36 Northwest. And we would need to find out sooner rather than later, how our plan that our voters have approved and we actually have, you know, bond money in the bank ready to go. How, how do we coordinate that and what does that look like in the final project? So those are things that staff sees as being on the front burner, not the back burner. And with council concurrence, we would proceed on those fronts.
All right, no further questions. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Councilmember Studley.
I did have one, one other question. I know that somebody had asked about environmental impact from traffic, but have, or just traffic impact, but what have you guys studied or have you studied any environmental impacts in rural communities where you've put turnpikes in the past?
I'm sorry, it's maybe getting late. Can you please ask that one more time?
Have you all, has the OTA ever done an environmental impact studies of what their turnpikes have done in rural areas in Oklahoma in the past?
Oh, I think the answer to that is no, not, not that I'm aware of. Now, when we come, for instance, on the Turner Turnpike, because what you're basically, I think what you're asking is when we went through Stroud, Oklahoma with the Turner Turnpike, have we ever done a follow up study to see what the impact was, the environmental impact?
Or Blanchard or, or going down to Chickasha, like all those. Have you done any environmental impacts to the farmland?
I think that the answer to that is going to be no. The, I was made aware that a study existed that had to do with salt that we use on, you know, for snow and ice work, that there was a study done having to do with that. If I can get my hands on that, I'll provide it to you. The one, the, the biggest, and, and Kirsten can explain this, and she's explained it before, the, the, the biggest environmental impact is usually dirt, to especially water, is usually during the construction because of all the exposed soil, not any different than a housing development or commercial development. We do a lot of effort, we put a lot of effort into capturing runoff sediment.
Well, we as a city have actually banned commercial development that far east as well as housing developments that far east. And there's a reason that we did that is to protect our water.
Yes.
So you're telling us to trust you to come into our city, but you've never done any environmental impact studies of what you guys have done or left along your turnpikes in the past?
I'll speak to the monitoring. Thank you.
Yeah, and certainly the sensitivity of, of that watershed is, is known and important. And one of the things that the turnpike has engaged for the entire program is a compliance monitoring team that their sole job will be to, when the program is under construction, to be in the field, making sure that the contractors are following all of the rules and requirements that are put on them by, whether it be the Army Corps through their permit or DEQ through any process or any other environmental commitment that may come out of the studies that we're performing. They will be monitoring that, reporting, documenting and making sure that the contractor is following all of that, all of those procedures.
It's, it's still very scary because you are messing with our watershed and, you know, mistakes happen. They do happen. And how are you going to mitigate that if it happens? There goes our, our, not only our drinking water, but Midwest City and Dell City as well. Another thing that I just wanted to point out, and then I'm, I'm also through with my questioning or comments, you guys had mentioned about this taking truck track off the road and kind of bypassing I-35 and alleviating that. And one thing that I do want to point out at a meeting earlier today, prior to Dr. Amy speaking, a state trooper was up there talking. And I'm sure you guys all heard, if you were at the meeting, that there is no place for truckers to currently pull off and they're having to pull off on the side of the road. And the state troopers have to knock on their windows and say, hey, you've been here long enough, it's time for you to go. But we have requirements that these truckers are required to pull over and take a break, preferably at a truck stop, once they've been on the road for so long. So you guys haven't even solved that problem from Tulsa to Oak City. So now how are you going to solve it going from Purcell all the way to Tulsa? I saw in your map that you drew a little, little inlet or whatever, in the middle of a bunch of forest, a bunch of wooded area. So what, you're going to put a truck stop out in the middle of nowhere? And if not, where do you propose for these truckers to stop?
What you're seeing on the map, I believe to be the. What you're seeing on the map, I believe, to be the interchange, there's not, we're not proposing to put in a truck stop on any of these segments, although if it was a request, we could discuss it.
So all of those little parts where it has, like going through the wooded area in Norman, where it has open spots, I thought you said, I thought you told her that that was for gas stations.
No, those are, no, those are interchanges for access onto and off of the turnpike, like a diamond ramp.
Right, and there was one that was really large, and you, I, we'll have to go back if there's minutes, but I could have sworn that you said something about a gas station, that that was being built like that, so in the future, a gas station could be put there.
Oh, if I said that, that was a mistake.
Or a McDonald's, or something like that.
No, so the model, the area that you're referring to that came up in our board meeting today, that the troopers been working on, is on the east end of the Turner Turnpike, again, that toll road was built in 1953 around cash collection, there were only, the only places you could get on and off of it were in Oklahoma City, there was not an interchange that currently exists at Luther, there was not an interchange that currently exists at Wellston, you could get off at Chandler, you could get off at Stroud, Bristow, and then you were basically to the east end of the Tulsa area. So there were only three intermediate interchanges. And what we're trying to go back and solve, as what's on this map, is to add interchanges in between each of those interchanges. That is in this 15-year plan. If I'm still around 15 years plus after that, the next goal would be to add more interchanges so that, so that trucks can get on and off of the turnpike. That section on the east end has a really wide shoulder, they started staging there, at first it started with one or two trucks, that has slowly grown to where the truckers that utilize the Turner Turnpike have developed a plan, that they plan to stay on the eastbound or westbound side of the Turner Turnpike.
But there's no place for them to get off, right?
They installed signs a few months, a few weeks ago, I don't remember when the signs were, three or four weeks ago. Since they've installed those signs, they started knocking on windows and then issuing warnings, paper warnings, to the, to those truckers, because it's not the same people staying there every day.
I guess how is that fair to the truckers then? You're building this as a truck bypass so that they can get around, but then there's no place for them to pull over, but you're saying that this is a good idea?
We're trying to add additional places for them to get on and off, so that they can get off of the interstate and find a safe place to park. That is always-
Where would they do that on the east side of Norman though?
At, where would they do that on the east side of Norman?
Yeah.
We're not building a great big wide shoulders in this section that would facilitate truck parking. What's happened, if you will, what has happened is that number has gone from a handful of trucks to more than 100 trucks every night. After they started knocking on the doors, or knocking on the windows, those trucks have reduced from more than 100 down to 15. They are staying either at our designated truck stops, which we do have on the Turner Turnpike, or they're utilizing the exits that already exist, or they're stopping prior to them turning out. They don't have to drive until they hit their limit and then immediately pull over. They can plan to pull over earlier, which is what most truckers are doing. They're coming into and out of Tulsa, the westbound side is no different than the eastbound side, they have all of Tulsa to find a place to stop and stay, and they decide to pull on the turnpike because it's extremely convenient, they can hit the shoulder. It's dangerous to have a stopped, non-crash-worthy vehicle on the shoulder of a road with the speed limit, and that's particular section is 80 miles an hour. We put up signs at the OHP's request, they identified it as a safety issue, we've known it was a safety issue, together, we're working together to add those signs and to continue to move them off of the turnpike.
I guess my point of all this is just to say, we're doing all of these things in hopes that these other things happen, but the turnpike that you've already created hasn't had that already happen, and you're already creating a dangerous situation for those truck drivers. So I just don't see, that doesn't sound promising, and it doesn't sound like anything that you're going to bring to Norman is going to be as effective and have these same types of issues is a little bit scary to me, especially out in the eastern part of town, so, I don't know. I'm done with my questioning, do anyone else have anything?
Thank you. Councilmember Lynn.
I'm sure you folks feel like the torches and pitchforks are out for you sometimes from here and there, but I just want to say that I appreciate you turning out and answering questions, that is appreciated. Got one quick question that was sent to me. Can you clarify how the newly adopted right-of-way policy is different than what it was prior to being adopted this morning?
So the policy that we put on the board and was approved today on the board is basically the exact same way you should be driving forward, with just a couple of little formatting changes, i.e. pulling its own section out for appraisal review, it was buried, it was combined with appraisal to make it more clearer, we pulled that into its own, two separate paragraphs. We also qualified, you know, how the process of utility relocations would be utilized, and with this being a 15-year program, and also having capital improvements, the previous policy only applied to driving forward. So we basically wanted to take those in driving forward and continue it along and apply it across to keep uniformity across this bond program, and need capital purchases to keep uniformity and put that out there, to have that in place.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anyone else? I share my appreciation for your time tonight. It's always a fun time in the Norman City Hall. Tough questions and not a lot of answers, but we understand you're not that far along, which is also part of our frustration, so I look forward to continuing this line of communication and doing everything we can to find a solution that works for Norman residents, not just truck drivers.
Mayor, thank you for having us today. I do want to apologize for how this rolled out and not being able to visit with you prior to the formal announcement, we can talk about that some other time.
I'm sure we will.
The, another, there were other groups that were not informed, including all of the area legislators, and I apologize, and I have apologized to all of them for how this is done, our processes are a little bit different. We are Oklahomans, and we have to represent turnpike authority and how, and the process that we have to operate within, so there are, there are certain things that have happened through this that we're, that we are not happy with about the way it's going, and we, you may or may not be able to believe me, but we understand in some cases where you sit and where somebody whose area is highly affected sits, and the opinions that you have on our process. So I want to formally apologize for that, and then I also want to tell you, thank you for having us tonight, so that we could answer some of these questions, and I apologize that it's taken me a month to get here.
Thank you. All right, that concludes the first item in our study session, let's go ahead and take a break, stretch our legs, and we'll come back for the second issue on our study session.
All right, let's go ahead and get started. Our second item of the night is continued discussion regarding the relocation of the warming shelter. Do we have any sort of presentation or are we just continuing discussion?
No presentation. Madam Mayor, the conversation, our last homework assignment had to do with the impacts or our ability to verify the status of anyone wishing to seek shelter on the registered sex offenders list. And so since last Tuesday, we made contact with HUD representatives and representatives from the Department of Commerce in the state of Oklahoma, and there's a very strong nexus between actions we take and program changes we propose for our warming shelter that do require consultation and approval by the State Department of Commerce. And what we have learned is our ability to verify any potential guest at the warming shelter status on the registered sex offender list requires some documentation changes on our part and some policy changes on our part that have to do with our intake documents. The first time we meet a person at the warming shelter, we have a form and we ask you a series of questions. And we would have to expand that document to include questions about our ability to verify your status on that sex offenders registration list. That is doable and achievable on our part. We have the language that would be required to be added to our intake documents. So at Council's direction, we would begin to put those documents together along with the policy documents that kind of govern how those intake forms are utilized, and we would bring that to you for your consideration and approval. Plan documents that would describe how we change that process would also go to the State Department of Commerce for their understanding and recognition. And after those documents were approved by the State Department of Commerce, we would be able to maintain the current status of our shelter as a low barrier shelter, which would not jeopardize the status of our current grant, which would expire at the end of August. So we don't have access to an alternative location if a registered sex offender were to show up at our door. And we were, you know, we would go through the process and verify that they're on the list, and we would say, you're not able to be here. You are within 2,000 feet of a school or a sensitive use, so you must depart. We do not have access to another facility where we'd be able to guide them and say, your best bet for shelter tonight is X-location. So that's a gap in our service that the VA may have a solution for, but the city of Norman does not. So we do recognize the ability to ensure, assure residents that we would not be housing registered sex offenders in the low barrier shelter, either at its current location or at a site on the Griffin property.
Now, you met with the school that has shared concerns and informed them that the state was putting in a day shelter. And what was their response to that? Because were they aware of it?
They were not aware of the proposed Gibbs House conversion. It was the former site of the Youth Mobile Crisis Response Unit, and the state has now relocated that service into a larger state-owned building, freeing up a house that was built in about 1951 on Gibbs Street, which is actually on the state campus. And in weeks, and I've sent off an email to Mr. Jeff Dismuks about the anticipated start date. They said weeks, not months. That facility will be opened initially Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. to provide access to day services, educational programs, case management to put folks on track for housing, job training, and, you know, access to things like this, you get a driver's license and a copy of your social security card and birth certificate. The school was not aware that that was coming from their campus. There's a row of older buildings in pretty rough shape. And we stood out in the backyard and identified on the other side of those buildings is Gibbs House. And it is anticipated that that center will be open for the homeless population early this summer or late this spring. So that population will be far more visible on campus. I'm assuming about the same time the school is preparing to close for the summer.
And you also learned that they're trying to add a grade, so they're outgrowing their facility anyways. So while our shelter would be temporary, their school appears to be temporary just because they keep growing. And congratulations on their success, but.
It's not uncommon for new or emerging schools to grow basically one grade level per school year so that their very first class of incoming students, and, you know, maybe it's kindergarten or first grader, you know, grades K through three. And then each year they add fourth and then the fifth and then the sixth grade to grow their families as the campus grows. And at their current location, there's no more internal space. They would be adding modular classrooms to the grounds, and they would rapidly run out of grounds. And we had a great conversation about our ability to share that story and help them with eyes and ears in the community to find a great long-term location suitable for LeMond and their ultimate goal to grow all the way through high school. And find a spot that's big enough for not just classroom space, but all the outdoor space that goes along with high school education, including sports facilities and that type of thing. There's a couple of spots on the map that we both recognized as great possibilities. And they asked if I would keep my eyes and ears peeled for those opportunities and help make connections where we think we can help them achieve their ultimate long-term goals as well. But a great story, dedicated staff. They have staff on campus representing 13 countries from around the world, which is just fascinating in a single school. And just truly an asset to the city of Norman and the families that they serve.
Okay, great. Thank you. Councilman Berlin?
With that database that you're talking about, the ability to check, would that be limited to just what we have registered in our city? Or would it be statewide? Or what would that database be? Because we know that we have transit populations that come through, and it's not just local.
We would have the authorization to check any databases, what we would request in that release form that they sign when they come to the city. Are the database maintained by the city of Norman is obviously the most current information we have on the local side. But there are databases that would give us a broader circle about where they may be registered. And it is definitely their responsibility when they come into a new community to make that contact, either through their parole officer or through the police department to register, even if the address is homeless. So a couple of places we can check, one local that we monitor weekly through the police department, and then a larger database we may be able to access via social security number.
I'd still like to say, I just, if, while that school's there, even if we do take these measures, which I do appreciate you looking at it and putting the work in on it, I still see nothing good. There's going to be something bad that happens, is what I think, eventually. Just give it time with the kids being there.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall?
So just to follow up on some of the comments that you made. So I, first of all, really appreciate all of the efforts that, you know, fellow council members and staff members have made to communicate with the principal and the board members and the parents at LeMond School. And I really appreciate you being able to spend some time with them and use your superpower of creative problem solving to look into the future and see how we can, as a city, assist in helping them grow and find a permanent location. From my understanding with speaking with the principal last week, they clearly have a very successful model. They have continued to experience growth every single year while they're adding grade levels. And clearly, in the next few years, they certainly need to make a change. So I'm really grateful that, you know, we can be a part of that and assist with helping them make a transition to meet their educational goals in the future. And also, just wanted to quickly recap where we are because I know I've heard from some parents from LeMond and other interested residents. And I think there's just some misunderstandings about what a low barrier shelter is and that the way and how our shelter operates now, which is in the same way it will operate at another location. So just to quickly run through that, a low barrier shelter is not equal to a no barrier shelter. Drugs are not allowed to be used in the night shelter. Alcohol is not allowed to be consumed in the night shelter. Registered sex offenders are not allowed to stay at the night shelter. And I wanted to also thank you for following up because it appears that we have a path we weren't sure we had to add another layer of how we can have a better understanding of who is staying at our shelter. So I think we actually have three levels now. We have the ability to post a sign on the door. We are now, I think, will take further counsel direction to amend the policies and procedures to update our form and allow us to add the next layer of being able to ask the question again. And then it's my understanding from visiting with our law enforcement officers with the Norman Police Department that not only is there the requirement to check in every seven days, but there is active communication reiterating that and reinforcing that staying at the night shelter is not an option. So now we have three different checkpoints to be able to address that concern. So I think we're moving in the right direction. I also think that we really need to start focusing on who, not who can't stay there, but who does stay there. And I know in particular, we have an interesting story about several people who stay at the shelter that are currently employed and are having challenges securing temporary and/or permanent housing. We're able to accommodate them and to help them have a good night's rest so that they can stay employed and keep their job and be productive. So I think that's, you know, one of our success stories that we can talk about. And in regards to security, I think there's also some misunderstandings about that because I've had some people say, oh, you don't even have security at the shelter. Well, we do have two full-time security guards. They are on a 12-hour shift. They come in and work from 7:00 p.m., a little bit before 7:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. So they are on the premises the entire time that we have guests staying at the shelter. Once a person checks in at the shelter, they are not allowed to exit and re-enter. Personal belongings are secured when a person enters the shelter and returned to the owner when they exit in the morning. The other thing that I've said many, many times that I think is one of the most positive aspects and added benefit to our shelter is not only are we providing a safe place for people to sleep and be off the street, but we are providing case management every single night. We can range from two to four case managers that are on the premises for the evening hours. And they are there to actively address those who are staying there, work on, hopefully, finding a housing solution for them, and identify other services that they may be needed. I am not aware of any other agency in town that offers case management during the evening hours, so that is another gap that we fill. The other thing that, when we talk about relocating and some of the concerns from the community, we are adding additional options, really in a very steady pace now, that don't currently exist or we are bringing online little by little. So the first thing that is happening, you alluded to the Gibbs House. And I also just want to clarify, this is a project of the Oklahoma State Department of Mental Health, correct? The city, I'm sure, is a, you know, partner and wants to be in communication, but they are operating, they see the same thing we see and are identifying a need in the community that they are stepping up and filling. And so they have the facility. They are the operator. They will be moving forward with the first step in trying to provide a day resource center to our community. So that's a very positive step forward and something that we don't currently have. Okay. So the next thing that we've talked about is, I think we're on track for the 988 rollout of a crisis response team to respond to mental and behavioral health issues. So that is going to be an added layer that not only people working with this population, but anybody, anybody can have access to the 988 number, correct?
Correct. This Friday, I'll send you an updated presentation that Mr. Jeff Dismuks and I presented to the Oklahoma Municipal Management Services Group, several cities represented throughout central Oklahoma. And the state has been making progress. They have awarded contracts for transportation services. So now every county in Oklahoma has a contract service provider to provide transport to people in crisis to the next available bed, wherever that may be in Oklahoma. Great conversations took place, cities bordering other states. And now great conversation about if the nearest bed is 20 minutes south, but it's in another state versus three hours north in Oklahoma, can we account for that? And I'll tell you, the state was very responsive, saying, we actually do need to look at that to see if there are reciprocal service agreements we can make to provide the most efficient level of service to people in crisis in the state of Oklahoma. So really impressed with their responsiveness. So they have been making great strides. They actually have an agreement with a brand-new service provider to operate the entire 988 system for the state of Oklahoma. It's an entity that provides that service for the state of Arizona and comes with just an incredible pedigree and resume in their ability to deliver that service at a very high level. So they're rapidly approaching their July 1 go-live date. But I'll send out to you, Council, that updated presentation. You'll be able to see some of the new milestones they've achieved.
Well, I see that as a real game changer and, again, addressing one of the gaps in services that we have identified in our strategy of moving forward to reduce homelessness. And that brings me to just a brief reference, again, to a nonprofit or a volunteer group that is aggressively working for nonprofit status, and that's Caravans. And they are literally filling the gap with what 988 is not going to be able to do in a very local, targeted way to provide transportation. And we're watching this model being developed and evolving right before our very eyes. I checked in with the folks that are using their own cars, volunteering their time, trying to develop their model while they wait for approval. And right now, they are averaging, averaging 175 to 200 transports per week. So we are definitely also meeting another identified need and am very optimistic about them gaining the nonprofit status and how we, as a city, can possibly help provide some of the transportation that they may need. But they would also act as an operator, which is a model that we keep going back to. We also have Food and Shelter that offers breakfast every single day, which is another layer that's currently in place. But we're actually adding three more options for how to continue to meet neighbors where they are and continue on our path to reduce homelessness. So some of the other things that are outstanding, that we really can't figure out quite yet, is we also, I want to remind everybody, have applied for ARPA state funding to actually build a new shelter in a new location. I think that probably won't be decided until in the summer sometime.
Correct. Sometime in July, we anticipate notification.
So that's something that we really don't know the answer to quite yet either. And the other thing that we need to be cognizant of is that our current funding for our shelter runs out on August 31st. So that's just kind of a recap of where they, where we are. And so I have identified, with the help of staff, several things that really need to happen before we're in a position to make any kind of decision or any kind of vote. So I am interested to seeing if we have consensus to investigate the following things. Number one, enter into discussions with the Department of Mental Health on what the terms of the lease would include and might look like. We don't really know that. We need to have that information come back to us. Number two, we are going to have to attend to some of the technical aspects of our contract through the Oklahoma Department of Commerce. And number one is to pursue amendments to policies and procedures to include that additional screening question when entering the shelter to allow staff. screening question when entering the shelter, to allow staff to ask the person who is checking in if they are registered as a sex offender. That is literally a process that we're going to have to go through, and staff is going to have to support us in what that's going to look like and how we proceed. Number three, begin discussions also with the Oklahoma Department of Commerce to seek approval for a change in the location of the current shelter on Comanche without compromising the current terms of our grant contract. That's also something that's going to take a little bit of time, and so that doesn't put us in a position to make a final decision until we address those three things. And on top of that, we also need to recognize the changing role that I think we're pivoting to as a city, and one of the things we keep talking about is, is it sustainable for the city to operate a night shelter? And I think, I'm guessing that our answer is probably not, and so, the staff has already been investigating and is working on developing an RFP that we would also need to take a look at, to, you know, offer that to anybody who might be interested in coming in and working as an operator. So, if we proceed on these four paths and get additional information that would then come back to council, we would be in a much better position to make a final decision about relocating the shelter. As much as I personally would like to speed this up, I recognize now that this is going to take some time, that we're dealing with agencies that we have to work through, that there are going to be decisions that come back to council for further review. And I think, in a way, this is hopefully reassuring to our LeMond parents, because I don't see how any of this is going to happen during this school year. I think now they're investigating other options for their future, and so, perhaps, you know, taking our time and making sure that we have next steps in place before our funding runs out in August buys that time. So, I think that's where we are, that's how I would like to proceed with any consensus that I have from my colleagues.
And to add to that, our lease is out in April, so...
Actually, we know from speaking to the property owner that because we have a date certain at the end of August, he is willing to continue to work with us as we move through those steps.
There you go, okay. All right, any other comments? I appreciate the update on how, or Councilmember Tortorello?
You know, I think we are working towards a solution, Councilmember Hall, this is great, what you've done so far, and Mr. Pyle, what you have done so far too as well, and as a council, I think we are heading in the right direction. I do like the aspect that we have that database and part of the intake process, I think it needs to be done. I think, I think at the end of the day, we need to protect the kids. I'm still up in the air about moving the shelter to its proposed location. You know, we only have to get it wrong one time, that's it, and then all heck breaks loose. So, I know it has to be done, I know why we're doing it, and I know that you've mitigated sexual offender process, and I know that the school is working under alternatives too as well here, so. It's one of those situations where, you know, we always have to put the kids first, and I know that we're doing the best we can moving forward to make sure that actually happens, and I know sincerity that we are going to make that happen, but anytime, and I'm not going to criminalize the homeless, it's not my issue here tonight, but anytime you bring this together in a place where, you know, when you bring this element together, I think there's cause for alarm with some of the citizens around there, and sometimes I think we have to err on the caution of the citizens too as well in what they want. And, you know, I just think that, I know the shelter has to move from its current location, and, you know, if we have other options, I'm always open to look and explore these other options. It's just, I think it's a bad idea also to move this to where it's proposed. We'll, you know, we'll still continue to follow it, but I always will have to follow and protect the kids, I mean, that's the way I see it for right now. But, thank you for your help, Councilmember Hall, you are tremendously passionate about this, I can see, and I just, I have reservations right now about this move.
And I understand that, but we really have four steps that we need to take that will come back to council for further review before we can even get to the point of whether we're deciding whether we could do it. We also have other things hanging out there, including the ARPA possibility of not ever choosing to go in this direction anyway, so...
That's something I'm looking forward to hearing more.
Well, and I, so I think this allows us a path to allow our staff to further do the due diligence that's needed in these four steps to bring back to us before we make a final decision.
And to Councilmember Tortorello's point about, you know, the fear of our success, and should we be allocated state ARPA money to develop a permanent location, our ability to find that location, it will be the same challenge then as it was in 2019 to find a site, and the challenge it was to find the site we currently occupy. If there were a wonderful spot, we would have already been there, and we recognize that no matter where we locate on the map, anywhere close to where services are available, breakfast, lunch, dinner, case management services, there really aren't any spots on that map that would allow legally anybody on the sex offenders registrant list to participate. So, there isn't that spot, you'd have to go real far east, and then you're so far away from services, it's no longer a viable option for shelter space. So, we appreciate your patience and your willingness to continue the conversation, because it is through the conversations that happen at this dais that we wind up with the best possible options for the community. So, we appreciate it.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Schuler?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to City Manager Pyle and city staff, and really to Councilmember Hall for sinking into this issue and kind of providing us with a lot of backstory, a lot of detail, a lot of understanding with where the history of this process has gone with us as a city, you know, taking on a warming shelter, once Food and Shelter decided that they weren't going to continue providing that service, and, you know, us really thinking about and utilizing the Homebase study to fill our gaps and underscore what is needed in our community. And so I think Councilmember Hall really laid out, I think, the path forward, and I appreciate trying to think about all of the ways that we can mitigate security, you know, getting a better list, making sure that we're not having sex offenders stay at our shelter, and really kind of checking all of those boxes that are necessary to secure the location. And so, for all of those reasons, I, you know, the path forward that she laid out with the several items, the three items I believe that would need to come back to council, and four, excuse me, would come back to council, so I'd like to see those continue to progress and move forward, and for us to continue those conversations.
All right, Councilmember Berlin?
The true goal of this is to give somebody a place to sleep and get rest, clean up. Why could we not go out further east? You could have a single bus stop that loads people up at 6:00 or 6:30, takes them to that destination, brings them back in the morning, close to all the services. Then you're not having anybody running around doing anything, there's no need to linger around the facility, and it would be out located by itself where it's not disrupting everybody else. It could be a bus ride in the evening and a bus ride in the morning. If you want to go get services, here you're out, you could drop them off at Food and Shelter for breakfast in that area. They're going to come back, go around to those services anyways, and then you'd have so many that you could take out there in the evening. If you're going to have it, why is that not a viable option? Why does it need to be located right there? That's just a quick book. We have public transit, we have buses, we could fill them up and take them out there.
Thank you. Councilmember Studley?
That's called segregation, and we don't practice that anymore, Councilmember Lynn. Homeless people are citizens in our community, just like everyone else is, and to think that we would have to separate them at night is ridiculous. The gaslighting has just completely gone too far with you guys, trying to say that this is about the kids. We're pretty close to Longfellow, we're also pretty close to Lincoln in the current warming shelter, which is an elementary school. Have there ever been any reported issues about any of the homeless population having any impact on Longfellow or Lincoln that we're aware of?
None has come to my attention, and I'm sure that would be...
We would all be aware, right, we would all be aware if something like that were to happen. So, we have the current warming shelter by a middle school and by an elementary school with nothing happening to any of the children at the school. Maybe that's because Norman Public Schools has taken an extra measure to ensure the safety of their students, I'm not sure, but I do know something that has really concerned me, a lot of the emails that I have received from parents that go to LeMond, is they've said that there have been instances where the homeless community has caused issues in the school in the past, and my concern is, as a school and as a parent, why are they not providing any more security if these issues are already occurring? I'm not, I'm really confused as to why us talking about moving a warming shelter over there temporarily has brought up red flags when they're already sending us emails saying that these things are currently happening, but yet they're not providing any additional security for those kids that are there, which is what the big concern is, the kids. So, if they were that concerned with the kids, I would assume that these measures would have already been in place, especially knowing that there's a couple of officers that have their children that go to school there that have also recommended some additional security measures to the school in the past. So, I just think that we need to get out of this gaslighting thing that we're in. We're moving, we're talking about moving this to an area that already provides a lot of services to the homeless. This is literally on the same campus as a mental health facility for the state, a drug rehab facility, Gibbs is now opening up, across the street is Food and Shelter, which was the warming shelter when LeMond decided to rent their building on the state property. So, to act like this is something new is, it's not, and to act like this is going to make things more scary for the students, again, I don't believe that, because we're already providing those services. So, I do want to thank Councilmember Hall for coming up with these additional suggestions, because I would hate to exit or vacate our current warming shelter, we're still having these things pending, and then something happened where we would have a gap in service, that's the last thing any of us want to have happen. So I really appreciate you bringing up those points, Councilmember Hall, but I'm curious to see what staff brings back to us with those suggestions. Thank you.
All right, I think everyone said their piece multiple times. You provided new information, and looking at the dais here, it looks like we do have consensus to move forward, perhaps not unanimous, but we need to get off of this and move forward. So, please take care of that, and I look forward to any and all updates on this very important issue. With that, this study session is adjourned.